Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,745th meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of August, 2024, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the minutes of the 4,745th meeting of council held on the 27th of August 2024 be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. I would like to call now on Mrs Mary Doolan, who will address the chamber on the role of community groups in public discourse about active transport. You can either stand or sit here if whatever you're comfortable. Thanks, Ms Doolan. Please proceed, you have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor, and councillors. Thank you for allowing me to address the chambers this afternoon. I am a volunteer co-convenor of two cycling advocacy groups, being the Brisbane CBD and Brisbane South Bicycle User Groups. Our main aim is to lobby for improved and safe cycling infrastructure for all types of people riding bikes and for those who would ride bikes if there was more safe infrastructure in place.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
We do this in an unpaid, purely voluntary capacity.
Thanks.
Okay. We do this in an unpaid, purely voluntary capacity whilst often holding down full-time jobs or other commitments. We do this because we know that more people riding bikes as a form of transport or recreation has huge economic, environmental, social connectivity, and physical and mental health benefits whilst also reducing congestion in our streets. On 21 May this year, during Volunteer Week, the Lord Mayor made statements about the role of bicycle user groups in response to repeated questions raised by councillor Massey regarding the lack of safe, protected bike lanes on Nudgee Road, where in 2023 a man was killed while riding his bike to work. In response to councillor Massey's questions, the Lord Mayor made several comments that were untrue, inappropriate, and disparaging towards bicycle user groups, namely that our groups were, and I quote, 'political activists in support of the Greens', 'green mouthpieces', and infiltrated by Green activists'. He went on to say that he did not take bicycle user groups seriously, as we had lost all credibility, and he would therefore not deal with us. However, nothing was said in relation to what council was doing to address the unsafe conditions on Nudgee Road. These statements made by the Lord Mayor about bicycle user groups deeply offended me and truly disappointed me and my fellow volunteers. These statements showed a complete lack of respect for our legitimate roles as people advocating on behalf of the bike-riding community to make Brisbane a more accessible and livable city. I certainly never heard these types of comments levelled against bush care groups, for example, for whom I also volunteer. The bicycle user groups and I am involved with are ordinary members of the Brisbane community who are passionate about bike-riding being as convenient and safe as possible for all types of riders. We are not aligned with any political party, and we will support any policies and procedures, or projects rather, that provide bike-riders with what they need, which is a position where cycling is and is seen to be a valid, convenient, and safe form of transport. We have no interest in which party proposes a project or policy, only the content of that policy or the outcome of the project. On that basis, we have supported and promoted many projects delivered or proposed by the incumbent council. Where council has delivered the outcomes that our members seek, we have been vocal in our support via social media. For example, the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, the protected bike lanes in the CBD, the Gabba Bike Way, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, to name just a few. Where other parties have proposed good active transport ideas, we've also supported those. However, where we see poor decisions, lack of consultation, unsafe, or no outcomes being delivered in the cycling space, for example, Nudgee Road, we will act without fear or favour in calling these out and asking for better outcomes. This will occur no matter which party is responsible and is what our members expect of us. We want to work with council and councillors to ensure connected and safe cycling infrastructure is delivered in Brisbane. Prior to this year's council election, we reached out to candidates on all sides of politics. We offered to ride with them through their ward to point out where safety or connectivity issues existed, issues that we knew prevented many people, particularly women and children, from riding. We also sought out each party's policy in relation to cycling so we could pass this on to our members. Bicycle user groups will continue to offer our assistance and feedback to council to ensure the best outcome for Brisbane residents. We will always do this in a respectful but robust manner, and would appreciate the same courtesy be returned to us as volunteers working for and within the Brisbane community. Thank you again for raising, sorry, thank you again for the opportunity to raise this issue with the chamber, and I warmly invite the Lord Mayor and every councillor to take the opportunity to ride with us or to meet with us at any time to discuss the needs of people who wish to have a safe and convenient way to ride their bike in Brisbane.
Thank you, Ms Doolan. If you'd like to take a seat, councillor Murphy will care to respond.
Yes, thank you for coming to speak with us today, Ms Doolan. The Shrima Council's goal is to provide a world-class transport network that is connected and reliable, and most importantly, we want to build a network that supports choice, a network that has better roads and reduces congestion, a network that delivers world-class public transport, and a network that helps people leave their car at home to walk, ride, or scoot instead. On this side of the chamber, we are committed to keeping Brisbane moving no matter what mode you choose. In the past four years, the Shrima Council has invested over $390 million into active transport in Brisbane, more than the Queensland government has invested in the entire state. And when you compare our investment to that of our opposition, we've invested 25 times more than when Labour last held power in this city. We are tackling, as you mentioned, large trunk infrastructure like the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Bridges, the Citylink Cycle Way. We've just finished the Horrora Court Bridge, the Corringle Drive Bridge, and we're improving bike lanes on Junction Road and Rainbow Street in Sandgate. There's no doubt that there's more to be done, and there's plenty more in the pipeline. And we're very close to landing an agreement with the state government on extending the Shaftesbury Avenue Bike Way to the Kangaroo Point Bridge. So we are incredibly supportive of improving our active transport network, and we've been chipping away at new infrastructure each and every year. I know you represent a bicycle user group, Mary, but we know that now active transport isn't actually just about cycling, it's also about e-mobility as well, scooters and devices. And while we completely accept and expect bug groups to be pro-bicycle, it has been, I think, unfortunate to see bug groups increasingly becoming anti-car as well. We do support the shift to public and active modes, but we believe that should be achieved through lifting up active transport infrastructure, not denigrating motorists or people who choose to use their cars or who have no choice but to use their car. We want more people on buses, we want people to travel actively, but the reality is still, most of Brisbane travels by car. Brisbane's climate is hot, humid, and sunny. Last week, the last week of winter, we had consistent temperatures above 30 degrees Celsius. Still, we see many bug groups make spurious comparisons between Brisbane and Amsterdam or Brisbane and Utrecht, you know, as if through infrastructure alone, through more bike ways, we could arrive at a flat-temperature European city almost overnight if only there was the political will for change. We are striving towards a more extensive, high-quality network, and as I've said, there are still residents who will choose not to ride no matter what infrastructure we build. I will say, on this side of the chamber, we have been disappointed by the politically partisan approach taken by many bug group members in recent years. It's not enough to say you're non-partisan, you actually have to do it. We've been accused of being corrupt or shady when bike ways aren't supported by the residents of the communities that councillors represent. We've been accused of having blood on our hands every time a cyclist is tragically killed on our roads, often mere hours after a fatality has occurred and before police have commenced their investigations. Of course, all of us in this place take part in robust debate.
Point of order.
But some cycling groups, we believe...
Point of order. One moment, councillor Johnson, there is no interject during public...
I just don't think it's appropriate...
There is no interjection, as you know, in the new rules to be able to do that, so I ask you...
It's not appropriate for the public and active transport chairman...
No, councillor Johnson.
...to make these allegations against the member of the public.
You do not get to respond.
It's not appropriate, and you should intervene.
And you do not get to speak at this time.
You should be intervening.
Please sit down, you know very well.
Well, he, point of order. You should intervene here, his comments towards a member of the public are inappropriate.
Councillor Johnson, I am cautioning you. Councillor Murphy.
So we have seen, Madam Chair, in our view, bug group members engage in partisan political behaviour, name-calling, abuse intimidation online and on social media, and this is not only councillors but also council offices doing their jobs on these projects that have been the victim of these. So we do think that some bug groups have lost significant credibility in recent years because of the tone and the tenor of the advocacy, not the advocacy itself. And I think that is a shame, Ms Doolan, because so many of your members do indeed make incredibly valuable contributions to our projects and have for many years. I know that you met with councillor Adams previously, and she certainly conveyed to me that you provided some excellent ideas and great suggestions on future cycling infrastructure in her local area that she thought had merit. However, the interaction that you had with councillor Adams is not the interaction that all councillors have experienced with bug group members. So you've come here to give some feedback to us, and we will absolutely take that on board, but I hope that you'll be able to convey our feedback to some of your members in your organisation so that they may do the same. We think it's important to foster a constructive and respectful debate when it comes to cycling infrastructure. We are all about improving active transport in our city.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
And we can do that better together if we're constructive.
And thank you, Ms Doolan, for coming in today. Councillor Johnson and councillor Massey, you are cautioned. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, last week you released Brisbane's Games Transport Legacy Plan. Can you please update the chamber on our plan to keep Brisbane moving up to and beyond 2032?
Lord Mayor. One moment, please, Lord Mayor. I'll remind all councillors that you are not to be speaking while other councillors are on their feet speaking, and calling out across the chamber is not appropriate conduct. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for the question, councillor Huang. I know that you have long been excited about the opportunities for better transport, better connectivity in your area, and obviously being the host of the Brisbane Metro Depot and soon to be receiving Brisbane Metro services from Aitmaile Plains through to University of Queensland on the 21st of October, you are excited. But there is more and more reason for more people across the city to be excited because we know there is a great opportunity over the next eight years and beyond to deliver a better connectivity legacy for our city, better transport, to move from public transport to mass transport, to lift the game with active transport infrastructure. And our plan that we released as an administration last week includes 18 practical and achievable initiatives and projects that will do exactly that. Game-changing initiatives that will leave a lasting legacy that will benefit the community, a city that is easier to get around, a city where more people have access to more services more often, a city where it is easier to walk, cycle, and scoot, and a city where we see connectivity being a key legacy of the 2032 Games. Now, it's important to remind everyone that that was the reason why we went after the Games in the first place. This push was led by local government, not just Brisbane, but the councils of South East Queensland, to get a transport legacy in place. Now, there are rail projects that are going both north and south that will be hopefully delivered before the Games, both up to the Sunshine Coast and improvements to the Gold Coast Line. We'd like to see more rail improvements delivered, but if we're realistic, we know we're running out of time to be able to deliver such large rail projects. They generally take a lot longer than eight years to be delivered. But having said that, now that we are just a matter of weeks away from Brisbane Metro Services operating, and there's been a lot of work put into getting that model so that it is scalable, this is something that can certainly be rolled out to more parts of Brisbane over time. And together with the other 18 initiatives in this plan, we are looking forward to seeing some real tangible benefits delivered for the people of Brisbane, not just in the two weeks of the Games or the two weeks of the Paralympics, but between now and then and also beyond the Games as well. And so that is our aim, that is what we're working on in partnership with the state government. We have a great deal of alignment with the government when it comes to getting some of these projects up and running, and we're looking forward to getting that alignment also with the federal government as well, who we've been having productive discussions with in recent times. To be clear, the Brisbane Metro Gabba Station, which was part of the South East Queensland City Deal and funded by all three levels of government, is not the right priority right now. That's not to say that it will never happen, but right now, the $450 million underground station looks more like a $600 to $800 million underground station. And it is our very strong view that, given that the Gabba is not going to be demolished and rebuilt in the way that was talked about by the previous premier, that that kind of investment from all three levels of government could be better placed by expanding the metro network to more locations. Now, is this the sum total of all of our transport and infrastructure ambitions for the city? Certainly not. This is very much related to Games, infrastructure, Games venues, and how we can get people moving around the city effectively or more effectively. This is certainly not the sum total of our transport and infrastructure ambitions and plans, but it is something that is clearly looking to deliver a Games legacy that we can deliver through all three levels of government, through that City Deal vehicle, and something that I'm very excited about. And it's not just councillors on this side of the chamber that are excited, the community is excited too. We see that the people of Brisbane have responded warmly to this plan and this vision, and they want to see more done when it comes to all three levels of government working together to deliver better transport and better connectivity, and that's exactly what we want to see too.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, well, that's changed what I'm asking. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, this organisation here, Brisbane City Council, is represented by the councillors and yourself. Can you please advise when you brought the Brisbane City Council Race to Gold Games Transport Legacy to council for endorsement? Can you please advise when it became council policy? Can you please advise when it was discussed with councillors in public and endorsed as council policy as Brisbane City Council?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I think there's a requirement to ask just one question, there were multiple questions there, Madam Chair, I don't know if you want to consider that.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy, we don't need you to call out across the chamber.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston just asked a question. If, if councillor Johnston just asked a question, if, if the Chair didn't think that question was appropriate, the Chair would have said so, I presume, but you called the Lord Mayor to answer that, he's just dismissed your ruling in calling him to answer a question. So I'm just seeking your, your ruling on whether the Lord...
Yeah, I uphold your point of order, but Lord Mayor, you only have five minutes to answer, so I will let you answer the question as you can in five minutes.
Well, given that there are at least three questions there, Madam Chair, I'll answer the first one, and there should have only been one question asked. So this vision came through to Civic Cabinet last week, and this is the vision of the administration...
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Johnston, you asked a question, and the Lord Mayor is answering it, I suggest that you stop calling out and actually listen to the answer. If you don't like the answer that does not give you the ability to call out. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. This is the vision of the administration, and councillor Johnston well knows that enshrined into the way this place works, there's an administration or a government and there's an opposition. And unfortunately councillor Johnston sits on the wrong side of that line. And so as much as she would love to be involved in government decisions, she is not, she is not, she's not involved in the administration's decisions. So this is the administration's pitch to other levels of government for a transport legacy. And councillor Johnston, as much as she would love to be sitting in the cabinet room around the cabinet table, she had that choice, she had that chance, she had that opportunity.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, if you could resume your seat, Lord Mayor, for a moment.
I'm council policy.
And I caution you a third time, councillor Johnston, and councillor Griffiths for calling out as well. You will remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet speaking.
Thank you. And so this is the administration's advocacy and vision to ensure that other levels of government are clear about where we see the transport legacy heading and the support we need from them. And as I said, councillor Johnston had the opportunity to sit in the administration, but she actually resigned from the administration. She had the opportunity even once to sit in the Chair of Council, I remember as well, once, and who knows? Maybe Campbell Newman or Graham Cook would have appointed her to cabinet, I don't know, it's anyone's guess, but the reality is councillor Johnston's made it very clear she doesn't want to be part of this team, and I don't know why she's asking this question.
Further questions? Councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, we've just heard from the Lord Mayor about the exciting news keeping the northern suburbs moving. Can you please tell us more about our plan for the northern metro?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, thanks to councillor Dixon for the question. In 2032, visitors from across the world will be drawn to Brisbane as we host the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. And as we just heard from the Lord Mayor, the Games presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to accelerate investment in Brisbane's transport network. We are, let's not forget, the smallest city to ever host a Summer Games, so it's critical that we have a mature mass transit system to successfully host them. During both the Sydney 2000 and the London 2012 Games, overall patronage on public transport increased by almost 1 million trips per day, but our current public transport system can only serve about 50% of the projected trips to and from Games venues. We aren't Games-ready, and there's only eight years to go. As the Lord Mayor said, over 1,000 days have been wasted in preparation for the Games on discussions about stadiums, the premier on the red carpet, organisational charts being developed, but we are still yet to see a single document from the state government that outlines their plan to deliver transport to and from Games venues. Three years of nothing. That's why we developed the Race to Gold. It's our plan to make sure we seize this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and accelerate investment in mass transit for Brisbane. The plan that we've put forward is sensible, it's affordable, and most importantly, it's achievable in the time that we've got left. We no longer have time to plan and deliver heavy or light rail projects in time for the Games. We must focus on high-impact but lower-cost projects, and that's exactly what this plan delivers. So at the heart of this plan, Madam Chair, is our proposal to massively expand the Brisbane Metro. It's a bus rapid transit solution that will see us make the move from public transport to mass transit. It will deliver a step change in quality, a step change in frequency. As part of our Games transport plan last week, we revealed a package of new metro lines, which would see a total of 22 new stations built across the city. One of our first priorities, I know you'll be pleased to hear, Madam Chair, is taking Brisbane Metro to the north. Of course, the Shrima Council has already announced a plan to deliver a new Metro Depot in the northern suburbs, but now we've expanded on that vision outlining a proposal for more stations and stops across the northern suburbs. A northern metro line would massively increase the capacity on our bus network between the CBD and Lutwich, Kedron, Chirmside, Aspli, and Castledine. This proposal would link with the state government's delivery of the Northern Transit Way and complement future plans for the Gimpy Road Bypass Tunnel, a project proposed by this council. There's now less than 50 days until Brisbane residents will be able to jump on board the first Brisbane Metro Services chair. We know that Brisbane residents will love it, and we know that it's the future of mass transit in this city. But we're not the only ones who know it, Madam Chair, because our Brisbane Metro Expansion Plan has some serious support behind it. Last week, we were joined by the Premier, Minister Mellish, because our Brisbane Metro Expansion Plan is being backed by them, as well as the South East Queensland Mayors, to jointly announce these plans. Partnership between all levels of government is essential to prepare us for Brisbane 2032. That's why we're very proud that all levels of government, regardless of political party, can see that bus rapid transit networks serviced by Brisbane Metro is the future for Brisbane. Brisbane Metro is now a project with true bipartisan support, Madam Chair. The only astonishing thing is that the Labour opposition has still yet to get on board. The Premier's on board, the Transport Minister's on board, Treasurer Jim Chalmers even has been out at our Metro Depot, and he was singing Brisbane Metro's praises, Madam Chair. He even christened the ping-pong table. Actually, lost ping-pong to the Treasurer, which is terrible, Madam Chair. One by one, we see even councillor Cassidy's Labour colleagues are starting to fall in love with Brisbane Metro. We know that councillor Collier and councillor Kim will be out at the Brisbane Metro Depot tomorrow. We hope that they'll come back and convince councillor Cassidy to get on board with Brisbane Metro thought and to understand just how transformational this project will be for our city, because soon councillor Cassidy will be the only politician in the country that's yet to get on board with Brisbane Metro. We know that as host city of the Games, we are going to have a golden opportunity to build a transport network with long-term benefits for our city, Madam Chair. We are in a race to gold now, and it's ours to win.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Deputy Mayor, councillor Adams. You recently returned from what you called a very insightful trip to Paris for the Olympics. Given you told the media this trip was partly personal and partly official, can you tell us what the trip cost exactly and how much was covered by you personally and how much by council?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The personal part of the trip was the time I took before Paris to visit my children that I hadn't seen for over 12 months. The part of Paris which was work was paid for for the accommodation I had there and the Eurostar to travel from London to Paris. No flights to or from London, purely the Eurostar and the accommodation. No flights to or from London, purely the Eurostar and the accommodation.
Further questions. Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the, my question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, we've just heard from the Lord Mayor about the exciting news keeping the eastern suburbs moving. Can you please tell us more about the plans for the eastern metro?
Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, I can. Thanks, Councillor Atwood. Thank you for the question. I know the eastern suburbs are very close to your heart. They're close to my heart too, Madam Chair. And that's why I'm so excited that our Race to Gold transport plan also outlines a massive uplift for public transport in our eastern suburbs. For years, decades even, we have heard promises from the state government about the eastern busway. The planned busway was due to stretch 17.7 kilometers from our existing busway at Buranda through Carandale and Chandler, all the way out to the Redlands and Kapalaba. It was due to be completed by now, but we're here now in 2024 and the state government has made little to no progress on this infrastructure. Over the last 15 years, we have been fighting an uphill battle for better public transport along this corridor. But with the 2032 Games on the horizon, it's more important than ever that we get this project back on track. We heard from the Lord Mayor earlier and that we've already lost one in four days since we were named the host of the 2032 Games. On this side of the chamber, we don't want to see another day wasted. So as part of our massive expansion plan for Brisbane Metro, we've identified the old Cleveland Road corridor out to Kapalaba as one of our future metro lines. Connectivity around the areas of Chandler and Kapalaba will be crucial to the Games. Brisbane is home to 18 Olympic venues and 11 Paralympic venues, and many of them are located in the eastern suburbs. We have a world-class velodrome at Chandler which will host the cycling and BMX events. The Brisbane Aquatic Centre will be home to the artistic swimming, the diving and the water polo. The Belmont Shooting Complex will host all of the Olympic and Paralympic shooting events. The only venue in the southern hemisphere capable of hosting all those events in one place, Chair. And plans for the new Chandler Indoor Sports Centre will see the eastern suburbs become the home of gymnastics events. And Councillor Wines, I'm not sure whether they're going to put the breakdancing for 2032 if it's still here, but I know you'd be very keen to see it. Maybe, maybe it can come to your ward. Further east in Berkdale, we'll be able to watch the Olympic canoe and slalom events at the new Redland Whitewater Centre. So an eastern metro will enable those Olympic venues to be served by high-quality public transport, but it will also enable tens of thousands of residents living along Old Cleveland Road and the surrounds to gain access to fast, reliable and affordable public transport. Currently, we know two-thirds of all public transport trips in Brisbane are taken by bus. It shows the importance of ensuring our bus network can cope with the additional demand created by the Games and beyond. Buses are actually already enormously popular along Old Cleveland Road corridor. Over 40% of peak trips along Old Cleveland Road are made by people in a bus. Imagine if that trip was faster, more frequent, more reliable and more comfortable. That's what we can deliver with Brisbane Metro coming to the east. We know that with eight years to go, we have already run out of time to deliver heavy or light rail along this corridor. And as I've said before, Metro is the only mass transit solution that can be planned, designed and delivered in time for 2032. That's why Metro BRT is the solution for the east, Madam Chair. And as I mentioned earlier, the next step is a rapid business case program. For the eastern metro line, the business case will help determine the best infrastructure solution for Old Cleveland Road. Of course, Chair, the Race to Gold doesn't deliver every infrastructure priority that we would like to deliver, as the Lord Mayor said. It's focused. It's a targeted list of projects that we see as critical to a successful Games in 2032. So while it does detail our plans for dedicated bus rapid transit lines ahead of the Games, there is a lot more for areas where it's not practical. We know there are parts of our city where new metro lines may not be the first solution, perhaps because of the existing presence of heavy rail or the highly constrained road network in that area. Of course, I'm talking about our western and northwestern suburbs, Chair. The good news is, one of the things that we negotiated into our bus contract earlier this year with the state was a rolling network review process. That means there will be a significant opportunity to redraw and revisit the bus network in these areas over the next 12 to 18 months under the new contract. Projects like the Mogul Road corridor upgrade are key enablers for future public transport improvements in the western and northwestern suburbs, and we certainly see great opportunities for improved bus services to the west in the future. There are snake oil salesmen out there though, Madam Chair, who will tell people in the west that they will get everything they want if they vote Greens. They'll tell them they'll get a new bridge. They'll tell them they'll get a rail line. They'll tell them they'll get coke in the bubblers and free tuck shop and no homework and, you know, they'll tell them all sorts of things.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Your time has expired.
The only side that's ever delivered for the west is this one.
Further speakers, Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to Deputy Mayor, Councillor Adams. Councillor Adams, the detail you provided on your trip to Paris, to the Paris Olympics so far has been very scant, including how much it cost. We know part of that trip was a holiday and we just heard about a train trip. But can you provide a list of who you met with, what was discussed and what official events you attended to justify the extremely high cost of your travel?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Look, I am quite aware that the amount that was spent on my travel is public. It was in E and C papers. It's very easy to ask for that amount and my experience with Councillor Cassidy through you, Madam Chair, is whatever I say, he will make up an amount anyway that suits his agenda and his Twitter account. So I am not going to answer that absolutely false claim of wanting to know. And to say that my report has been scant, I have done three weeks in a row in general business, so that is 15 minutes. I have spoken about what programs I have been to and who I met and what I saw and what I have learnt. But I am happy to do a committee presentation just for Councillor Cassidy.
Further questions. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, Councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, earlier today in committee, I asked a question about the checks following an article in today's Australian newspaper. I'm shocked at the answer you've just provided me. For the benefits of the chamber, can you tell us what Councillor Massey thinks is a good use of ratepayer funds?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can confirm that Councillor Parry did seek further information about reimbursements to Councillor Massey for a newsletter which appeared in the accounts. Now, there's nothing wrong with award newsletter. On the face of it, that sounds pretty fair enough. But as we know from the news this morning, when it comes to Councillor Massey's latest newsletter, this was in fact a different story. I personally was shocked when I saw a copy of what has landed in Gabba Ward letterboxes. You see, this newsletter wasn't to keep residents up to date with some of the fantastic things happening locally, like work on the Brisbane Metro or the Kangaroo Point Bridge. At the centre of the newsletter, we see a two-page diatribe about the Israel-Hamas conflict. It peddles claims that are extreme and misleading and they fuel division and antisemitism. Among other things, Councillor Massey's newsletter says, "Israel is a European colonial state built on stolen indigenous land, much like Australia. Israel imposes an extensive system of oppression on the Palestinian people. This system amounts to the international crime of apartheid." Councillor Massey's newsletter describes the current conflict as genocide and ethnic cleansing.
One moment, please, Councillor Cunningham. Councillor, you will, Councillor Massey, you will not call out while somebody else is speaking. And I do caution you. Thank you, Councillor Massey. I caution you about calling out and showing inappropriate behaviour. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. It also features a timeline, and I use that word loosely. It curiously begins in 1516, where Jews, Christians and Muslims apparently lived in peace and harmony under the Ottoman Empire. And it then takes us to the present day. Madam Chair, it's akin to publishing a timeline of Australian history starting in 1788. The timeline makes no mention of the horrific October 7 terrorist attacks. More than 1,200 innocent people were killed and hundreds of hostages taken. Many are still held captive by violent terrorists, by the violent terrorist organisation Hamas. There is also the omission of the Holocaust itself. Madam Chair, I am personally accustomed to the extreme rhetoric and the very questionable tactics used by representatives of the Greens political party. But I could only imagine how unsafe this kind of language makes the Jewish community in the Gabba Ward feel, especially those who receive this to their home. It is apparent through information in the accounts for payment that Councillor Massey has billed ratepayers an extraordinary amount for this newsletter, which fuels division and antisemitism. We have printing costs of nearly $10,000 alone. We have graphic design costs of around $1,700. All councillors will know that award-wide Australia Post unaddressed mail delivery will cost in the order of around $5,000 these days. So that's well over $16,000 so far. But Madam Chair, as Councillor Parry will know from the line items she queried, there's more. The resident interviewed as part of the newsletter about Palestine was paid $200. And on top of it, the academic who Councillor Massey selected to write these two pages was paid $2,800. On the basis of the information I have seen, this was for 28 hours of work at $100 an hour, all to produce 750 words of content. That's 27 words an hour at a rate of $2 per word. Councillor Massey is furnished with a ratepayer-funded office and staff, staff who are employed by council to advise her on things like this. But instead, she outsourced it and all up ratepayers paid a bill which appears to be close to $20,000. This is an incredibly concerning use of ratepayer funds, and I think it is timely to remind the chamber of the Ward budget guidelines, which state, and I quote, "Only expenses incurred by the councillor regarding matters of the Brisbane local government area will be considered for payment." And most importantly, it is the responsibility of each councillor to understand this guideline and ensure any expenditure is consistent with the guideline. If this is how the Greens choose to spend their Ward budget, what would they do under a coalition of chaos with Labor and a $4 billion council budget?
Further questions. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Brisbane City Council currently regulates temporary accommodation, including provisions for short-term rentals through the City Plan Short Term Accommodation Code. The Unit Owners Association of Queensland, which is a civic social group dedicated to furthering the interests of Queensland unit owners and has for years been advocating for Brisbane City Council to deliver compliance for suspected illegal Airbnbs. With the LMP administration's announcement of permits, the requirement of permits back in June for turning homes into short-term accommodation and silence since, Lord Mayor, can you state if council will ever implement regulations related to short-term accommodation code or the short-term accommodation permits in the future?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, Councillor Massey. This is a matter which has been subject to a considerable investigation and assessment. And I want to commend Councillor Cunningham for leading the group that reviewed this, this particular matter of temporary accommodation and short-stay accommodation. So our approach was to make sure we had a thorough assessment of the situation so that responses could be based on the facts, on a rational, I guess, response to what is often a very emotive issue. And so what Councillor Cunningham's investigation determined is that this type of short-stay accommodation represents less than 1%, is that correct? 1% of all accommodation in Brisbane, less than 1%. Now, the Greens would like to say that this is stopping thousands of people getting into homes. They would like to ban this kind of accommodation, I know, but it is less than 1% of all accommodation. And so, yes, another example of the Greens offering simplistic solutions to complex problems. We're going to offer a realistic and practical solution to what is a complex problem. And so Councillor Cunningham, in her review, has made a number of recommendations that we are pursuing. One of those recommendations is that we will develop and introduce a new local law in relation to short-stay accommodation so that it is managed appropriately. That local law will not allow short-stay accommodation to be offered in certain parts of Brisbane where it is not appropriate, such as in low-density areas. It will allow for the regulation and enforcement of this kind of accommodation in cases where it is causing an impact to the local community. And that is something that is very difficult at the moment based on the current laws and based on the division of those responsibilities between different levels of government and, and different, I guess, legislative frameworks. And so the report recommends a way forward. We're progressing with those recommendations. We do intend on bringing through a local law to help regulate this kind of accommodation and will certainly be going forward as we've, as we've announced in the budget this year in June. And so that work is happening. I want to thank Councillor Cunningham for the way in which she's led this process and continuing to work with officers to take this forward. But we do need to find the right balance here when it comes to managing impacts of this kind of accommodation, making sure it's not permitted in areas that it's not appropriate for. But also where there's impacts on local communities and compliance issues, that, that we have the power to actually respond in an effective manner, because at the moment, our hands are effectively tied behind our backs in many respects. And to progress these kind of matters often involves a very lengthy court process. It involves multiple notice, compliance notices, which take a long time to go through the legal process. And then at the end of that process involves a very costly court battle. And so it's not working for anyone at the moment. We've proposed a way forward so that it does work for both Brisbane City Council and the people of Brisbane, and we're progressing forward with that plan because we need to make sure that we have the ability to conduct the enforcement that's required and expected of us. Because at the moment, we don't really have the type of ability to respond in a clear, quick and decisive manner that people would expect. As I said, the process is very long and drawn out and often involves court action which, which costs everyone a fortune and doesn't necessarily result in the outcome that we're all hoping for in the end either. So we want to change that. We're working on changing it. And I thank Councillor Massey for the question.
Further questions. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure, Councillor Wines, and it is one question. Councillor Wines, one of the key commitments of our Games' transport legacy plans is smart suburban corridors. Can you please tell the chamber about what this will mean for Brisbane commuters?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councillor Toomey for the question. As all councillors should know, we are committed to a safe and efficient transport system, a safe and efficient road network. And part of that efficiency is having modern, modern transport infrastructure. And one way that we've committed to do that is through smart suburban corridors. Now, I'm pleased to provide an update on one of our key commitments through the Games' transport legacy plan, the Smart Suburban Corridor. As Australia's fastest-growing capital city, managing congestion is crucial. Now, we are looking to introduce an AI transport management system. Now, much of our traffic signalling technology is used in our city and many cities in the world, in Australia in particular, dates back to the late 80s and 90s and is based largely on road-embedded sensors. To address these challenges, we are currently doing, but we are preparing for a global market sounding and are already being approached by a number of international companies. Now, while we discuss what it was that we have currently, the Brisbane City Council currently uses the Sydney Coordinated Adaptive Traffic System, known as SCATS, which is a widely respected platform used by many cities around the world. And basically, it uses a range of what you'd classically see, a traffic signal box, the embedded device, which is a kind of a magnetized pad that recognizes a motor vehicle as above it, signalling how the intersection works. It then uses a series of cameras to feed back if required to the BMT MC. It then uses a series of cameras to feed back, if required, to the BMTMC. So that requires in-place technology, but also a human element as well. We are looking to modernise all of that, and the way we're going to do it is through, this calendar year, we'll be launching an expression of interest process to identify the best traffic management technology, and we are looking to revolutionise how our intersections work. As I say, we'll be opening up how we're doing this through, as I say, the market sounding and expression of interest. And as I've already mentioned, companies from around the world are coming to hear because of our clear interest in a modern system of moving people around. Now, recall that this work is part of our four-point plan to reduce congestion, and that we've made an initial commitment of $15 million over three years to fund a trial and implementation of this technology. Now, as councillors should recall, the plan to reduce congestion is upgrading high priority roads, better and more frequent public transport, including the expansion of metro, making it easier for people to leave the car at home by continuing to provide active transport opportunities, and also, and this is the main one, getting the most out of our existing infrastructure with cost-effective upgrades and advanced and modern technology systems. As we promised during the election and have recommitted in the Race to Gold document, we will be trialling this system on one to two key corridors over a 12-month period. The trial is essential for testing the system's operational improvements before a full rollout across the network if the trials are successful. This new system will not only optimise transport corridors between the suburbs and the CBD, but will also allow opportunities for prioritisation of public transport if we wish, ensuring a faster and more reliable travel time for public transport. Similar systems around the world have seen success in Western cities, where they've seen a double-digit improvements in their traffic flows after a 12-month period of testing. We anticipate similar, if not better, results here in Brisbane. Once fully implemented, the system can enable automated traffic signal sequencing based on real-time data, enhancing traffic flow and public transport reliability. And as I say, it's all about providing a modern, efficient transport system and the commitment to getting the most out of our assets. So in the document, it speaks to the opportunity to improve traffic flow and travel time reliability right across the city and in particularly all modes. Now, the network has more than 1,000 signalised intersections, but we'll be focusing on a key few to trial to ensure that the system that we select through our selection process, through the ERI and the market sounding, is the most effective one. Now, we will be seeking, we are already, as I say, a point of interest for many companies across the world. We will also be, as I say, scouring the world for the best technology for us that we've seen work in other places, but make no mistake, because of our work, we will be an international leader in this space.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to councillor Adams, the deputy mayor. Councillor Adams, you just said you spent $16,000 of ratepayers' money on a trip to Paris for the Olympics. That's the ENC figure you directed me to. There was a higher figure of $26,000, but the advice we received is it was $16,000. Clearly, the personal part of that trip accounted for some of that. However, you couldn't even name one meeting or event you attended when I asked you just 15 minutes ago. Isn't this more proof that this trip wasn't good value for money for the ratepayers of Brisbane?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I said, it is public information about what the cost is. I did not claim that was the amount. I'm being verbal yet again. I did not say that any part of that was personal. Let me clarify. My children have been overseas for 12 months. I have been desperately missing them, as my colleagues know, for 12 months. I spent a month, this is the answer to the question, I'll take the interjection from the councillor from tennis, and how was this council? Councillor Cassidy accused me of using ratepayers' money for a personal trip. It is not council, and that is what I'm explaining. I spent a month with my family. That was my...
One moment, please, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Johnston.
As you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action in calling out across the chamber for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of the Meeting's Local Law 2001 that failing to comply with the request may result in an order being issued. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I took a month's personal leave to spend time with my family, fully paid for by myself. On the basis of this trip being organised quite a while ago, the Lord Mayor asked me soon after the election if I would take the opportunity to go to Paris because I was already on that side of the world. So the saving to the ratepayers was that it was only a Eurostar train trip to Paris for the 10 days that I was there. Back to London, and then I flew home again from my personal trip on my account. Now, I am happy to stand here for this five minutes and list off again the events that I went to that were held, the workshop programmes that were held by the City of Paris, because councillor Cassidy obviously has not listened to my general business for the last three weeks. But as I said, I am also happy to give a written report, and I'll do it in a committee presentation so councillor Cassidy can actually see exactly who, when and where I met, which I am happy to give my diary notes. It was a very, very busy 10 days. We learned a lot in those 10 days, but I can tell you something. I didn't need two private jets for just me to fly or two trains to follow us over to Paris. The hypocrisy of the ALP on this knows no bounds. Keep trying, councillor Cassidy, you're not going to catch me out, you are pathetic.
That now ends question time.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I wish to move a procedural motion that the standing rules be suspended to allow for a motion without notice about a matter that is not listed on the agenda to be considered by council in relation to councillor Massey repaying ratepayers for her latest newsletter. Seconded.
A procedural motion has been moved by councillor Adams and seconded by councillor Wolf, that we suspend the standing rules to allow a motion without notice about a matter that is not listed on the agenda to be considered by council. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Adams, please. Point of order.
Just seeking your advice, Chair. Is it appropriate for one councillor to call another councillor pathetic?
Councillor Cassidy.
You gave us a ruling a few weeks, months ago about language used in this place and describing certain councillors with certain things.
Councillor Cassidy, there's a lot of words that get used, and if I pulled them all up, there would be a lot. And no, I don't uphold your point of order. Simple, do not uphold your point of order. Deputy Mayor, will you please move the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that council calls on councillor Massey to repay ratepayers for the production and distribution costs of her Spring 2024 newsletter, which contains material that is divisive and hurtful to many in the Brisbane community. Further, councillor urges councillor Massey to reflect upon the advice of the Australian security and intelligence organisation that implores politicians to avoid inflammatory words and actions in relation to the Middle East conflict.
Seconded.
It has been moved that council calls on councillor Massey to repay ratepayers for the production and distribution costs of her Spring 2024 newsletter, which contains material that is divisive. Yes, thank you, councillor Massey. I'm actually speaking. Perhaps if you stop talking. I'll read that again, that council calls on councillor Massey to repay ratepayers for the production and distribution costs of her Spring 2024 newsletter, which contains material that is divisive and hurtful to many in the Brisbane community. Further, council urges councillor Massey to reflect upon the advice of the Australian security and intelligence organisation that implores politicians to avoid inflammatory words and actions in relation to the Middle East conflict. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Wolf. Councillor Adams, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have just heard from the Finance Chair, councillor Cunningham, that councillor Massey, the leader of the Greens, has billed ratepayers almost $20,000 for a newsletter that is divisive, antisemitic and dangerously irresponsible. This material has been distributed to residents within the Brisbane City Council area of the Gabba Ward with the Brisbane City Council logo, has been paid for by public funds, and I agree with councillor Cunningham that this is not an appropriate use of ward funds. The ward budget is provided so that councillors can talk about local issues that are in the public interest for the local community within the Brisbane local government area. These might be councillor Massey's personal views, and she is entitled to them. But if this is the kind of material she wants to put out in the community, she should foot the bill, not the Brisbane ratepayers. So firstly, I am calling on councillor Massey to repay these funds back immediately. As the elected council, it is her responsibility to make sure that the content she distributes is compliant with the guidelines and is defendable use of ratepayer money. This just does not pass the pub test. It should also be remembered, Madam Chair, that as councillors in this place, we have to abide by the code of conduct for councillors in Queensland. As you know, Madam Chair, the code of conduct requires us to show respect to all persons, treat fellow councillors, local government employees and members of the public with courtesy, honesty and fairness. And when making public comment, clearly state whether they are speaking on behalf of the local government or expressing their personal views. If you're a resident in the Gabba Ward, particularly if you're a Jewish resident, how would you feel about receiving something like this from your council? I was with a local Jewish resident this morning, and I can say he definitely does not feel safe in his local community. I know councillor Massey will get up and try and defend this and say it's not antisemitic, but I'd like to remind her of the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, Working Definition of Antisemitism. This is the authoritative definition adopted by nations around the world, including Australia. And I would expect that councillor Massey is familiar with it because I would hope that she did her own research before publishing this material. Some contemporary examples include denying the Jewish people their right to self-determination by claiming that the existence of a state of Israel is a racist endeavour, drawing comparisons of contemporary Israel policy to that of Nazis, and the worst of all, denying the fact, scope, mechanisms or intentionally of the genocide of the Jewish people at the hands of Nazi Germany. I take the interjection from councillor Massey that will never be denied, but it was blatantly left out of the very important timeline that she had to include in her document.
Councillor Massey.
Worst of all, she continues to ignore the Holocaust itself. There is no excuse for this. When we've just heard in the last few weeks from ASIO that any inflammatory and divisive rhetoric around the Middle East is fueling politically motivated violence here in Australia. ASIO, the experts, are telling us not to do this, but it's exactly what the Greens are continuing to do. In cities like Sydney and Melbourne, we've seen things like pro-Palestinian activists setting fire to the offices of Labor politicians, MPs and staff being harassed, and businesses with tenuous ties to Israel being blockaded. This fortunately is not something we have seen yet in Brisbane, but the last thing we want to see in council is this encouraged in any way, shape or behaviour in our peaceful and multicultural community. So it is important that we get on the record, Madam Chair, that these are not the views of Brisbane City Council. We do not endorse this, and we are committed to making sure Brisbane is a safe and welcoming city for people of all backgrounds. It's also important that we make it clear that this is not an acceptable use of ratepayers' funds, and we think councillor Massey should repay this money so it can be spent on its proper purpose to inform and improve, not divide, our local communities.
Further speakers. Just, can you just wait one moment, councillor? I'm just checking about something. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I will begin by saying I've been aware that through you, Chair, councillor Adams, deputy Mayor Adams, has been shopping around this story. And before I go on about the processes we actually went through, I will share a couple of things that are in here that haven't been spoken out loud or ignored by the LMP administration. The first thing, of course, is Khalil's story. Before they became refugees, Khalil's family were orange farmers. He remembers them and how the branches of the orange trees would bow down to the earth under the weight of their abundant fruit. Khalil's story goes on. He is a refugee from the 1948 Nakba. The picture here is of Khalil and his two sisters in a West Bank refugee camp. I can go on, there are quotes here also. One from Dr Elizabeth Strakoschki, the head of the Jewish Council of Australia. "We hear in the mainstream media that all Jewish people support Israel, but Jewish and anti-Sionism is as old as Zionism itself. I, like many Jewish people, know that the genocidal violence and occupation will never make Jews safe." I could go on about various quotes. Earlier, when councillor Cunningham was speaking, she stopped, she quoted this through you, Chair. "Israel imposes an extensive system of oppression on the Palestinian people." This system, what councillor Cunningham stopped before continuing was, and it's important to put this on the public record, this system amounts to the international crime of apartheid, as confirmed by the International Court of Justice. Now, one last quote that I will use for this. There's plenty here to look at, where I call people to get involved in peaceful activism through justice for Palestine. And that quote is, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Today's hit job from this council and through the media is led with lots of mistruths. The first thing that I would like to correct is the fact that we went through council community support services to get this improved. In fact, we delayed it for many days to get approval. We know that council, these services have rejected payments before to make sure that our newsletters aren't printed, and nothing happened from that. There is a whole process here that could be advised by the CEO. That process, that just process, is being bypassed by this council. There is also a process, of course, for complaints to the Office of the Independent Assessor, re any sort of managing of whether I have contradicted the councillor rules of conduct. That is, again, being bypassed by this council. What we see here is a censorship of people, or myself, elected by the ward that I represent, who have, many people have spoken to me about the grief and the grief that I face, thinking about the over 40,000 dead Palestinians, thinking about the 90,000 or so injured Palestinians. And this council would rather be outraged and create a hit job for this than actually condemn the genocide that is happening in Gaza and the deaths. That is what this... That is what this council would rather do. Nonetheless, I was elected by Gabba Ward residents to stand up for them, many of them that live in these residents that are affected by this day by day. And as I said, this is the council bypassing any actual proper legal means that they could have to do this. And again, it's disappointing to see you'd rather do this than stand up against genocide.
Councillor Massey, your time has expired. Further speakers.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Given the seriousness of the allegations made by councillor Adam, I'd ask for an extension of time for councillor Massey to reply.
No, there's no, there is no avenue. Just one moment, councillor Johnson.
You'd have to vote on it.
Is there a second? Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Chonwa for an extension of time for councillor Massey. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The answer is no. Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on this urgency motion. It is disappointing that councillor Massey has chosen to publish this newsletter, which unfortunately carries great consequences. The selective wording used to describe the conflict in Gaza is troubling, as it fuels hatred and contributes to the rising tide of antisemitism in Brisbane. In my ward, I've witnessed the painful impact of such rhetoric on our community. This behaviour is unacceptable, it is un-Australian and it is inexcusable. Earlier this year at the University of Queensland, we saw incidents where many students felt unsafe, isolated and unwelcome on St Lucia campus. The encampment set up in Great Court spread harmful and divisive messages. It was a clear example of how this kind of rhetoric can manifest into real-world hostility. This deeply saddens me, as I'm committed to fostering joy, kindness and a strong sense of community. What's even more troubling is that councillor Massey has used Brisbane City Council ratepayer resources to produce and distribute this material. It is totally inappropriate use of public funds. Madam Chair, Brisbane is a wonderfully diverse and inclusive city, yet it's evident that the Greens are intent on sowing division. I became a councillor to bring about positive change, to make a difference to people's lives and to promote unity, not division. Here in our roles as local councillor, it's about representing our communities by serving as a voice for their concerns, aspirations and their needs. As a councillor, we are entrusted with the responsibilities to advocate for local issues, ensuring that the community interests are prioritised. While I strongly support the exchange of diverse ideas, the material shared in this newsletter promotes a one-sided extremist narrative that spreads false information. Councillor Massey would benefit from revisiting history to understand the deep Jewish connection to Israel, which stretches back 3,000 years, long before the Roman Empire expelled the Jews from Jerusalem in the first century and established Syria-Palestine and centuries before the emergence of Islam. The Greens are urging our community to take sides and attend rallies where misinformation is rampant and hatred is sadly celebrated. We must refocus on addressing the needs of our community at a grassroots level by providing support to all who call Brisbane home. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Can I ask, and there is certainly precedent for this, and I believe the deputy mayor entered this into the debate today, there are two issues here on the table. In this motion, one that's calling on councillor Massey to repay ratepayer funds and the second to calling on councillor Massey to reflect upon advice, ask that each of those paragraphs be taken, Sarah Adam, for voting, please.
So you want to split the first paragraph we will vote on and then the second paragraph?
Yes, thank you. And just, in that context, that two very different things. And while I'm sitting here having read the article in The Australian this morning, first hearing about this, certainly didn't see the newsletter before, I haven't seen the newsletter, heard excerpts read from it today. And there's, and it's been brought up today, so it's really only come to our attention today, this issue, and there's obviously a partisan debate that's gone on during this motion between the LMP and the Greens councillor for the Gabba Ward. There's obviously a way in which these things can and should be dealt with if the deputy mayor believes, and she went into some detail saying, describing aspects of the councillor's Code of Conduct and the way in which councillors should conduct themselves. There's a thing called the OIA, of which the deputy mayor often speaks about, and its independence and I'm sure refers plenty of things there itself. This is the sort of thing that should be referred to the Code of Conduct if the deputy mayor believes that, sorry, that should be referred to the OIA if the deputy mayor believes that a breach of the councillor Code of Conduct, or in fact any of council's policies or procedures have been breached. We're going to be debating an item soon in ENC around the establishment of an ethics committee, of which these exact things will be referred to for investigation and for consideration. So I think importantly here, there is a process which should be followed. Perhaps the deputy mayor has referred councillor Massey to the OIA, I don't know. And the deputy mayor talked about, you know, said councillors having high standards of behaviour, particularly following principles within the councillor Code of Conduct, particularly around treating people courteously, treating other councillors courteously and members of the public. We'll just heard the deputy mayor say that, we'll just heard the deputy mayor call somebody pathetic just before that, and previously call someone a groin rub. So I take that.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Councillor Cassidy.
So I take the deputy mayor's sort of personal outrage, I certainly would accept others, but deputy mayor's personal outrage there with a grain of salt. But, so I think there's a proper process of which this should go through, an investigation which should be undertaken. I've heard from councillor Cunningham today in question time that apparently processes in terms of approvals and payments weren't followed, I think. I think that's what I heard councillor Cunningham say, and I've heard from councillor Massey say that they were, and it was approved by councillor support. So I don't think, I don't think you can make a judgement here today, right now, on the first point, of which will require councillor Massey to repay that money. Perhaps an investigation would suggest that and the reformed ethics committee would impose that sanction on councillor Massey, and then if the members of that committee determine that to be the case, then we would certainly accept that. But there has been no natural justice, which is a key part. It is actually now written into the Act that natural justice must be followed in these situations. Councillor Massey must be given an opportunity to prove otherwise. If she has a position on that, she clearly does, so I don't think this is appropriate. On the second point, though, I do agree. I do agree that council and councillor Massey should reflect upon that advice that was given. I was at a Labor Party function along with a couple of other of my caucus colleagues recently where there were violent, that was a violent demonstration out the front of, a demonstration of which councillor Massey spoke at, a demonstration.
One moment, please, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Massey.
Point of order, misrepresentation.
No, councillor, you want...
Okay, my mistake.
I note your point, but do not call out while councillor Cassidy is on his feet.
My mistake, but other elected Greens members, I'm sorry, but other elected Greens members were there. This is an event of which people were assaulted and abused when they were going through, so I do think that councillors need to reflect on that.
Just claim to be misrepresented.
Okay, I note your claim. And councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Councillor, sorry, deputy mayor, your point of misrepresentation?
Again, councillor Cassidy, you repeated something I did not call him.
And councillor, councillors.
What did you say? What did you report? She said you were...
Councillor Cassidy, you'll refer to councillors by their correct name. Councillor Massey, your point of misrepresentation?
Don't we do this at the end? Yeah, so I was not at that rally, I had Covid.
And councillor Cunningham, your point of misrepresentation?
Yes, Madam Chair, I did not say that councillor support approved the content.
Thank you. Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Thank you, and I rise to speak on the debate. I am not going to get into any of the issues about the current conflict that is going on in the Middle East. It is a terrible human tragedy, and that's all I will say about this. However, I am concerned about what's happened here today. Council policy requires us to submit our newsletters to councillor support in advance for approval. Yes, it does. And if councillor Cunningham...
Councillor Cunningham, please don't call out while another councillor is on their feet.
It does, and in fact, yesterday I was asked to do so for a standard flyer that we put out for the Sherwood Festival. So number one, the flyer must be approved by councillor support. Last year, when I wanted to have some yes signage prepared, council refused to allow it, even though it was council policy. It is council policy to support yes. That was refused in advance because our artwork has to be viewed by councillor support. Now, councillor Cunningham is in charge of this process, and I am advised by councillor Massey that the flyer was provided to councillor support and the flyer was approved. And as we are now aware, because councillor Cunningham and councillor Wolf have described in their speeches, the amount was paid for the flyer. So not only did council approve the flyer in advance, council has paid the invoice for the flyer. Now, I don't know, but I'm suspecting councillor Massey has not been asked to reimburse the amount by council, through councillor support. So the first question I have is councillor Cunningham, is the chair responsible for this particular part of council, and why is she going through this process now and in this way with the deputy mayor when a flyer has been approved, as it seems, as I've been advised by Brisbane City Council through the ordinary process? So that's my question. I don't know what's happened, who's done what, but that's the advice I've had from councillor Massey, and in 16 years in this place, I'm regularly asked to provide my artwork in advance for council, absolutely, every single one of us is, unless maybe the LMP councillors don't get asked to provide their artwork in advance. And maybe that's why councillor Cunningham's smiling away now, they just get the big tick on whatever they want to do. But the first question we've got here is, council has approved the flyer, so why is it now, after it's been approved and paid for, is councillor Cunningham, who could have stopped it if she legitimately held these concerns, if she legitimately held these concerns, the council policy that we are required to adhere to says the chair or the CEO can ask councillors for further information, which I understand they did, it was provided and it was approved. So councillor Cunningham is admitting here that she's let this flyer through, this is the only thing I can think, she's let the flyer through so that she can publicly come and do this motion in the chamber here today. Because I want to know, that's the one question I've got here, why did council approve this flyer if, as councillor Cunningham and the deputy mayor are saying, it is so offensive? Now, I have seen the flyer. It has an A3 fold of local news and an insert with information inside that is reasonably pro-Palestinian, to put it mildly. However, I've spoken to councillor Massey about my views and she's aware of those. I am concerned that the proper process has not been followed, well, it appears that the proper process has been followed, and now for political purposes, the deputy mayor and the finance chairperson are trying to claim that something improper has been done when it's all been approved by councillor in advance. So that's my fundamental concern here. We are required to submit this artwork to council for approval. My second concern regarding this is the deputy mayor's comments today, that you can't put anything that's not related to Brisbane City Council in your flyers. I look forward to that being the next issue we raise regularly.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation.
And I just rise on the second point, I believe this should be amended to add councillor Atwood. Two weeks ago councillor Atwood made awful comments about refugees in this place that were inappropriate, and I think that really her comment should be added, her name should be added to the second point, because her comments were not appropriate, they were inflammatory and divisive.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers. Misrepresentation, deputy mayor.
Councillor Johnson said, I said that you couldn't put anything in your newsletter that wasn't in Brisbane. I said it must relate to local issues in the Brisbane local government area.
Further speakers. Deputy mayor, write a reply.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to put councillor Johnson's mind at ease. I know she said many times her understanding from councillor Massey, and I make it very clear that there was no approval of this newsletter. There is no approval of the content of newsletters by council officers. There is approval...
One moment, please, deputy mayor. Again, do not call out across the chamber. It doesn't matter if you do not like what you are hearing, you cannot yell out across the chamber. Deputy mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The content of newsletters, under the City of Brisbane Act, out of a ward budget, are the total and full determination of the local councillor. And if there is an approval from a councillor officer that councillor Massey claims she has received, table it.
Yeah, table it.
Table it. Send me the emails because they do not, if it was censored, now here's an interesting thing, I've been censored, I hear, from councillor Massey.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Misrepresentation.
I note your misrepresentation. Deputy mayor.
If she was censored, the letter wouldn't have gone out. Council does not approve nor censor the content. It is at the councillor's discretion of what goes in newsletters. But if it comes in as a newsletter to councillor officers, they will reimburse because it is a newsletter which is the councillor's right to put out. But councillors need to consider what they put out.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do believe, though, in all of this argument, in everything that councillor Massey got up and doubled down on her beliefs, and I said it before, councillor Massey's beliefs are totally her entitlement, I don't agree with them.
Point of order, councillor...
Misrepresentation about beliefs.
I'm not...
I note your point of misrepresentation. Deputy mayor.
I'm sorry, councillor Massey got quite upset, she was talking about how she felt about the Palestinians, so I thought they were her beliefs, and she is entitled to those beliefs, we are a democracy. What she is not entitled to do is use ratepayers' money to fund those beliefs and fan the flames of anti-Semitic hatred in this city. I find it absolute, the hypocrisy of the Greens, as councillor Cassidy said, I support. I believe I have heard councillor Massey chanting River to the Sea in a protest that was out here in the city, in the King George Square, no Covid that day, but from the Greens' policy, left unchecked, hate speech can lead to hate... But from the Greens' policy, left unchecked, hate speech can lead to hate crimes. Politicians and prominent public figures in Australia often engage in racist hate speech that has gone from dog whistling to fanning the flames of racial conflict. Guilty.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Sorry, would the deputy mayor take a question about what the definition of hate speech is?
No, councillor Massey. Deputy mayor.
I've already given the definition of antisemitism and that document that came out of her newsletter is exactly that. I do have to add into this, though, that hate speech is only hate speech if it comes from far-right extremism. You know, of course, far-left extremism doesn't count, as we know from those in the Green Party. What we have seen over the last week, the intimidation of the Jewish community in the Gabbah and across Brisbane, the divisive hatred that has come through that newsletter is appalling. It is appalling. If any of you had the opportunity to speak to your near like I did today and how he feels now in his local community, a community that is supported by their local councillor to have anti-Semitic stickers and graffiti right across the si- uh, the suburbs, it is heartbreaking. I'm not saying that councillor Massey can't have those views. But it's not a local issue. It's not something that is about the local Brisbane City Council and the issues. It does not fit underneath the code of conduct, it does not fit under the guidelines for a newsletter, and it absolutely does not pass the pub test. We have taken the steps to ask advice from the CEO and we have advised local constituents that have um, can, have, uh, spoken to us about the officer of the independent assessor. And we will take steps necessary as well. But in the first instance, repay the money councillor Massey and think hard about before you do this again.
Councillor Massey, your point of misrepresentation?
Uh, thank you. There was two points. The first one being, um, approval. Every newsletter that I've delivered as councillor has gone to councillor support, who at times had advised me to remove certain aspects of it, which I have, on, on the principle that it would not be paid if I didn't remove it. That is the practice that we've continued. So that is a misrepresentation by the Lord Mayor that I haven't proceeded with that practice, especially for this newsletter. The second misrepresentation was about beliefs. Now, this um, uses the words of Dr Jamal Nabaski, Dr Amy McGuire, and Dr Elizabeth Rokowski of the Jewish Council of Australia. This is not about beliefs, this is research documentation.
Councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation?
Yes, um, the deputy mayor has claimed that council does not approve newsletters. Uh, I referred to an email on the 2nd of September yesterday at 1:30pm from councillor support. Can you please send me proof of what is going to be included in the mail out? And that is from a council, that's from councillor support, for a mail out for the Sherwood Community Festival. We cannot, we cannot get ours. Now, maybe this is not how it works with the LMP, which is now what I'm thinking.
Councillor Johnston, I don't see how you were misrepresented. You were not mentioned or misrepresented.
Madam chair.
Deputy mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented?
Yep, thank you.
Uh, what councillor Johnson just read out was not an approval.
No, thank you. Um, and it wasn't a misrepresentation of you, councillor Johnston, either. Thank you, councillors. I have got advice. I have got advice that, um, as councillor Massey, you have financial interest in the outcome. Uh, you have a conflict of interest and is such unable to vote on this matter. So we'll now move to the vote and, uh, we're taking them seri- no, that's okay. It's just. Okay, thanks councillor Massey. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
So I'm just a little bit confused, um, about that ruling. If there is a conflict of interest, um, with respect to her participation in this, should she have not left the room prior to this matter being discussed?
As it's financial, it's with the conflict is in actually passing a vote as to what, um, that outcome will be. Now, we're going to move to the vote, but seriatum, uh, so the first part or first paragraph of the vote. Uh, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by the deputy mayor. All those, uh, councillors, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Ring the bells, please. Clogs, please read the result.
Madam chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour, one against, and six abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now move the second part of the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division, second.
Division has been called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clogs, please read the result.
Madam chair, the ayes have it, the voting twenty-four being twenty-four in favour and one against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Establishment and Coordination Committee, Lord Mayor.
Excuse me. Uh, madam chair, the report of, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 26th of August, 2024 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 26th of August, 2024 be adopted.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Sorry, um, madam chair, just checking that someone will advise councillor Massey she can return.
Uh, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, can you put your microphone on, please?
Sure. Uh, last night, the Victoria Bridge Tropical Day and Radical Plays were lit up in pink to celebrate the Brisbane Festival, which has obviously gone off with a bang. And, um, the Story Bridge and City Hall were also lit up in blue to support Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and the Long Run campaign. Uh, the, uh, tomorrow night, the Story Bridge will be lit up in red and white to raise awareness for polycystic kidney disease. Excuse me. On Thursday, the Story Bridge will be lit up in purple to support Gynaecological Cancer Awareness Month. Story legu- Bridge will be lit up in purple again on Friday, this time in support of Braveheart's Day. On, uh, Saturday, the City Hall and Story Bridge will be lit up in blue, green and yellow to celebrate Brazil's independence from the Kingdom of Portugal on the 7th of September, 1822. Also, uh, today, um, as you came into the building, depending on which way you came in, you may have noticed some Australian flags flying. Uh, and, uh, uh, so we have today the 123rd birthday of the Australian National Flag. And, uh, as we always do, um, we held a ceremony in King George Square um, to celebrate, uh, the birthday of our chief national symbol. And we want to thank the Australian National Flag Association for their support, uh, and their advocacy. Um, it was also good, uh, that as announcement made today, um, each day, uh, sorry, each flag day, uh, the president of the National Flag Association presents an award or announces an award for someone who, in the last 12 months, has done a great job in promoting the flag. And, um, today he announced that the award this year for Queensland goes to, uh, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Milton Dick, uh, and, um, which was great to hear because, uh, as we know, uh, Milton is, um, a good friend of Brisbane, um, and, uh, he's done a great job in promoting the Australian National Flag. Uh, and in fact, he's introduced a new programme, um, that will circulate the country uh, to engage with young people about the importance of the national flag. Uh, and it's great that people on both sides of defence support the flag. Uh, we know that not everyone supports the flag, um, and there are some people that have every other flag on their core flute except the Australian National Flag, um, they've disappeared. Uh, but, uh, it is great that there's bipartisan support for the flag and, um, congratulations to Speaker Milton Dick for that, uh, award that was announced today. This week also marks the le- the start of the Legacy Week Appeal. Uh, Legacy Week Appeal has been running since the 1940s and it's a time for all Australians to show their support for the widows and children uh, of those who had loved ones that served our country, uh, and where lives were lost. Um, you can see, uh, ADF members out in the streets selling legacy badges. I see some councillors are wearing them, councillor Gibney in particular, uh, and others. Um, and it's important that we continue, um, to support the great work that Legacy does. We support Legacy in a number of ways, in particular through the annual payment of over a hundred thousand dollars, which was a requirement of the approval of the Legacy Way Tunnel that we insisted that each year, a portion of the toll revenue would go to Legacy. And that was, uh, obviously done in coinc- uh, coinciding with the naming of the Legacy Way Tunnel after Legacy. Um, and so this year, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars went to Legacy from that project and something we should all be very proud of. We've also supported the, uh, establishment of their new headquarters in Greenslopes, opposite the Greenslopes Hospital. Uh, that's something councillor Cunningham has particularly championed and something that she came up many, uh, up against many barriers for. Um, and so we had to get the support of the federal government. That wasn't easy, uh, but we managed to get there. And now, uh, it's a project that's underway and we're looking forward to seeing that completed, but one that council has supported. Uh, we had to acquire the land from the federal government. We then had to transfer a portion of the land to Legacy, so we've helped make this project happen and, um, we're very supportive of the work Legacy does. Yesterday, uh, was a sad day as we learned of the passing of Jan Powers, uh, who is also known as the Queen of Food, or the Queen of Markets. And Jan passed away peacefully in her sleep over the weekend at the age of eighty-five, which I think is very young. And Jan was a household name in Brisbane, uh, and is of course better known for the Jan Powers Farmers Market she founded, which now, uh, runs weekly at Powerhouse, at Manly and at Mitchelton. Uh, she was also a well-known TV personality and ABC radio presenter. In 1977, she was appointed as the first cultural ambassador for the city of Brisbane and was affectionately known as Mrs Brisbane. A lover of the arts, she became the deputy chairwoman of the Queensland Performing Arts Trust and, uh, was a member of council's arts and festivals book board. Uh, I'd like to extend my heartfelt condolences and the condolences of all councillors, no doubt, to Jan's family on behalf of the city of Brisbane, and we thank her for what she has done for the city of Brisbane. Uh, this Thursday, uh, there'll be a number of people, um, taking part in the Live Like Her Challenge, including, uh, myself and Nina. Uh, that's being held at the Brisbane Airport. Uh, this is a, a sleep, uh, a sleep in the car fundraising exercise, um, which we did last year and will be doing again this year to raise money, uh, for the Forgotten Women Project and Mangrove Housing. We know that, uh, women over the age of fifty-five are the fastest growing homeless demographic and, um, Mangrove Housing provides support and housing for that demographic. And so looking forward to participating in that challenge. And whether you can do it yourself or not, you can certainly take the opportunity to support those who are. There are many, many people taking part in that challenge and it's always, um, a real eye-opening night to hear about, um, the challenges in the community, but also to hear the good stories about how lives are being changed by organisations like the Forgotten Women and Mangrove Housing. Item A on the agenda is the procurement policy and plan. Uh, and this is for the year 2425. This document comes through every year and by the nature of this document, it must come through after the budget. Uh, this is required under the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 and it allows council to update and adopt a procurement policy and plan, which sets out how council conducts strategic procurement and contracting. My administration has a laser focus on improving opportunities for local suppliers in South East Queensland, as I've discussed earlier. Well over a billion dollars has been invested with local firms, uh, last financial year. Local business is the backbone of our economy and we support them through the awarding of contracts, uh, and other ways. And, um, that helps create jobs and put food on the table of many local families. Uh, we have a target of spending at least eighty percent, uh, with local businesses and in the financial year just finished, we reached eighty-seven percent, and so a fantastic outcome. Since we first introduced the local buy policy in 2019, we've invested over seven billion dollars in local businesses through this policy. This year, there are a few key changes to note. Most importantly, we've streamlined the policy, reducing it from thirty-seven pages to fifteen pages. Uh, we've also introduced a new section titled Leaders in Procurement Practice. This principle encourages a culture of continuous improvement in our processes, capability and performance. There's also been an update to the Value for Money section that highlights that procurement decisions are based on achieving the ultimate value for money. Uh, we're also continuing to incre- increase our investment, um, across a number of areas, including, uh, supporting social enterprise as well, which, uh, we've seen some great outcomes from. And, um, we don't just work with local businesses, we also work with social enterprise as well. Uh, this year, we target eleven million dollars with social enterprises. When we first started going out for procurement, there was a relatively small number of organisations that put up their hand, but it's growing every year and there's an amazing array of businesses that, uh, now want to work with council. And we're seeing, um, incredible, uh, stories come out of this, uh, social procurement, um, exercise that we've been doing. In the last year, we've continued to work with organisations like the Nunda Cooperative, which I had the pleasure of catching up with recently and, um, which I know councillor Allen is keen, is, is proud to have in his local area. Uh, they do, uh, a range of jobs for council, including being contracted to mow certain local parks in Nunda. Uh, they also do other work as well, um, and including for Virgin Australia and Murbak. Um, so they're not just working for the council, they're branching out and working with other businesses and enterprises. And so, uh, it's a great story and I commend this particular procurement policy to the chamber. Item B is the report of the Audit Committee meeting held on the, uh, 13th of August. Uh, and, um, as has been set out in the meeting, meeting minutes, the committee is responsible for reviewing and advising on council's internal and external financial reporting, including accounting policies, uh, the scope of, oh, extension.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded. It's been moved for an extension by the deputy man, seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the scope of work for the performance and actions of council's external and internal auditors and the identification, effectiveness and maintenance of controls and systems to safeguard operational risks, including financial and physical resources. Our audit committee's job is to provide independent oversight, uh, of, uh, their, our internal controls and processes and they do that well. The committee was briefed by the CEO, the CFO, chief legal counsel, chief internal auditor, and she- and Chief Information Officer on a range of matters. As always, the Queensland Audit Office was also represented at the meeting and provided an update. Topics discussed, as set out in the minutes, included cyber and technology risks and potential uplifts, and an update from Assurance Services regarding the completion of the approved 2324 Annual Internal Audit Plan, as well as progress towards the update of the plan for this financial year. Item C is the submission proposing to re-establish the Committee of Council called the Councillor Ethics Committee. As we know, previous amendments to legislation change council's framework with dealing for complaints of councillor conduct, or over councillor conduct. As a result, councillor conduct review panel ceased in 2020, and complaints regarding the conduct of a councillor were transferred to the office of the independent assessor. It's proposed that the committee will meet on an as-need basis to consider the findings of an investigation where there has been a referral of suspected, suspected conduct breach, or to decide not to start, or in fact to discontinue, an investigation. These powers are found within Sections 150A, E, A to E, and 150AG of the Local Government Act 2009. The submission also proposes to appoint members of the committee, and we're proposing this committee be a bipartisan committee with an administration chair and an opposition deputy chair, with councillor Allen being the chair, councillor Collier being the deputy chair, and also for members of the committee to be councillor Tracy Davis, councillor Sandy Landers, councillor Emily Kim, and councillor Charles Strunk. The administration members proposed are the councillors who are already on the committee of the previous version of this committee. Councillors Collier, Kim and Strunk were put forward in consultation with the leader of the opposition, councillor Cassidy. We've also got a clause in here regarding councillors' eligibility for membership of the committee, and that clause caveats that if a councillor has had any findings of corrupt conduct made against them, or multiple findings of either misconduct or conduct breaches made against them, either by the OIA or council in the last five years, they would not be eligible for appointment to the committee, which I think is a very reasonable expectation to have, given this is the Ethics Committee after all. And so commend these three reports to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on all three of these items, and ask they all be taken seriatum for voting purposes, thanks, so all individually. I'll start with Clause A, the Procurement Policy and Plan for 2425. I note this document has been reduced from 37 pages last year to 15 pages, just in the last 12 months. A lot has been cut from council's approach to procurement. We can only assume from that, and in reading through their glean, that this has certainly created more grey areas, which I'll come to when it comes to the local buy shortly, for this LNP regime to make decisions, no questions asked. The plan outlined in the papers discusses procurement strategies that have certain elements: value for money, environmental consideration, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander business participation, social principles, and some other things, which is great, things we support. These plans are there to set out the priorities of council and tell people what they will do in terms of procurement. We do need to have this policy, we understand. We do need external contracts, but as I've outlined over many years now, I am increasingly concerned about the amount of work that this LNP regime contract out, particularly ongoing maintenance work that we know is coming, that we know is budgeted for each and every year.
One moment, please, councillor Cassidy. Councillors. Councillor Marks, thank you. Can you please take any conversations outside? Sorry, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Why can't council jobs be protected by finding people to work in-house for council? This plan says, this is the interesting bit, this plan says that council must use council staff instead of procuring external providers, labour hire or contractors, when and where they can. But this LNP mayor totally ignores that. He ignored it in previous procurement plans, he's brought in here, and we are sure he's going to continue to ignore it. The LNP just can't seem to bring themselves to follow their own procurement plan. And we know that's not just a sort of slip-up here and there of this LNP mayor, we know he doesn't value permanent council staff. He's actually said it in the council chamber. He has said that he doesn't put a high value on that kind of arrangement, having people employed permanently within council. He would, he would contract out 100% of council's workforce if he could. We know that staff cuts over the last few years within council have meant we have skills shortages forcing more outsourcing to occur. Contracts that come through this chamber time and time again prove that. This LNP regime has brutally hollowed out council's internal capability to deliver services and projects in the suburbs of Brisbane. It's interesting that value for money is one of the priorities that's contained in here, when this council is happy to blow the budget on big pet projects like Metro and green bridges and international travel, as we've been talking about today. But looking at the focus on local procurement here, we know in the past, under procurement policies that have apparently prioritised local buy, we've seen bus building jobs shipped over to China and Europe, playground equipment increasingly made overseas not by local businesses, ferry terminals shipped in from overseas. We know local manufacturing doesn't really mean that much to the Lord Mayor, and this LNP council, local jobs don't mean much either. So it's not good enough to say that a global company has a head office in Brisbane, and therefore they are local, pulling the wool over ratepayers' eyes. We've seen changes to the definition of the 30% local buy weighting as well, that was previously contained in procurement policies. That now only applies to projects over $500,000, replacing a very broad term that used to apply to all items with now a term preference for local suppliers. So there's a watering down of the local buy component within this procurement plan before us today. It says here that sustainability is important. This is a council that took a policy to the last election, or an LNP regime that took a policy to the last election to expand food waste recycling and then cancelled it the day they got back into office. We know that they don't support sustainability on a citywide scale, so it's interesting to include that, but given they ignore most of what's in the procurement policy, it's not that surprising anyway. The plan states the council's trying to save $30 million on procurement-related activities over the next year, so I wonder where we're going to see those cuts. Of course, the first thing they will cut is labour hire, so they cut permanent jobs year after year and replace those, well, certainly full-time jobs with part-time jobs and part-time jobs with casual jobs, and then increasingly using labour hire and contract workers. And we see the first and easiest thing that this LNP regime see to cut when they announce those cuts, like in October last year, is to cut labour hire workers, is to cut workers working on contracts, delivering things like footpath repair works and curbing and channeling, and road resurfacing jobs as well. So we know more of those cuts are going to come because it's baked into this procurement policy. The document also lists some major contracts the council are entering into for the next financial year. And again, this is another example of ongoing cuts that we're seeing out in the suburbs of Brisbane. Arborough Services had $1.6 million allocated last year. This year, only $900,000 allocated in the plan before us today. $90,000 has been cut from the Moreton Island Waste and Resource Recovery item, something in my ward. You wonder whether these contracts are just being made smaller, or less spent on them, or being cut entirely, so the LNP can plug the massive hole in council's books, which are funding the, the blowouts are funding big inner-city projects. I guess this is really, yeah, massive, massive roundabout replacements, not really benefiting people out my way, but this is the procurement policy I suppose you have when you are in the LNP. Clause B, the report of the Audit Committee. It's my view, and I've been misrepresented a lot about my views on the functions of the Audit Committee, but it's, but it's our view that the Audit Committee, and certainly the report before us today proves that they're asking a lot of the right questions, they're asking some great questions of this council. We can see questions they are asking, and they've covered issues surrounding the hiring of a CEO, a new CEO, employee bargaining, financial matters and cybersecurity. But that's where the detail ends for us as councillors. We see, we see the questions being asked, that information is provided to the Audit Committee, but then nothing is given back to us as councillors. We can do requests for info, file requests on these reports as we've done in the past, however, that's obviously far too late in the process of approving a report from an Audit Committee at a council meeting today that we're being asked to endorse. The LNP is the only political party, clearly, that are privy to the details of the Audit Committee, because they can request in ENC the information that was provided to the Audit Committee by the CEO, by the CFO, by the CIO that are providing this information, but we cannot, as other councils that are not members of the LNP. What happens in those meetings stays within those four walls, we don't get that information. And we're concerned about how these reports, Audit Committee reports, are presented to us as councillors. What we've seen previously are very high-level minutes, lacking in detail, no recommendations. We see some further information in more recent Audit Committee reports, certainly about the questions they have been asking of council, but not of the information that is flowing back. We know there's been fraud issues, project delay issues, budget cuts. How do we, how do we know that this regime is acting on the advice of the Audit Committee? We're never given those details about the things that they are seeking to change, to fix the issues of which they have created ultimately. The purpose of the committee is to ensure that council is operating in a regulated, a well-regulated way, and it must provide adequate and transparent advice to all councillors. It's not just some councillors, the City of Brisbane Act and the regulation doesn't, and the Code of Conduct doesn't talk about some councillors getting information and other councillors not. It is in Brisbane's best interest to know exactly what's being discussed at this committee, particularly under this current regime. Councillors should be interested, should be very interested in the update that the acting CEO gave the Audit Committee, but doesn't give councillors who are ultimately responsible for good governance of this organisation any information, particularly the recruitment process for a new CEO, council's capital construction projects, the SEQ City Deal, very important in the moment because we've heard the Lord Mayor unilaterally change the terms of that SEQ City Deal without approval of council, council's EBA negotiations, council's 2425 budget progress, services for Brisbane deliverables, and a Deloitte Cybersecurity Maturity Assessment. The Audit Committee discussed opportunities for enhancement when it came to delegations and the statutory processes. These are really important things that we should have a lot more information, a lot more sight over, how these things are being dealt with and improved.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
I'd like to move an extension to councillor Cassidy's time.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Kim for an extension of time. All those in favour say aye. Those against, those against, no. Yep, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Might have been two in favour, but none against. So the Audit Committee was given details of budget funding requests as well from the Chief Information Officer. So the Audit Committee received information from the CIO about a budget request that they had done to the Lord Mayor in terms of programme deliverables. I'm sure that wasn't met with as much hostility as we are met in budget information sessions about getting that information out of that budget request. Important, important internal work that council is undertaking on behalf of us collectively as a council. So, you know, I certainly support the Audit Committee's right to question council's recent revaluations of property, plant and equipment as well, and council's assumptions on financial sustainability ratio amendments, ones that we saw that came through last week, of which no adequate response was provided by the LNP in terms of how you can find an extra $7 billion worth of value on the balance sheet, as well as changing the sustainability ratios to make sure that the budget still looks okay in theory. So, I mean, I get that's all really dry stuff that goes on in the Audit Committee, but it is critically important to Brisbane's future, and those questions of which they're raising, changes of which the council needs to make, are in the interests of every rate payer and renter in Brisbane. And so I think councillors deserve access to this information, these reports are not adequate. The final item, the Councillor Ethics Committee. We will, as the Lord Mayor has indicated, that consultation the Lord Mayor talked about occurred in June, I hadn't heard, I actually, in fact, didn't hear back from the Lord Mayor until we saw these items come before us today. So there was, there was some form of consultation granted, and the opposition did nominate councillors for the re-establishment of the Ethics Committee in council. We certainly had reservations, and labour councillors ultimately resigned from the previous Ethics Committee due to external interference in the decision-making of that committee. On balance, we think reconvening the committee instead of bringing those matters it would consider to the full council, a better way of handling those issues. Now, I think we just experienced in the, the motion of which the deputy mayor moved earlier, what the, what would occur in the absence of an Ethics Committee. Perhaps the LNP were trying to prove a point in doing that, I'm not sure, but, but in the absence of having an Ethics Committee in a process of investigation and recommendation at that level, what we just experienced then would be the normal call for, normal call for business, call for how those things would, would be undertaken, and there's certainly a danger that those things could be described as kangaroo court. I think 20, 20 or 25 minutes worth of debate and a decision. So I think on balance, reconvening the committee is a better way of dealing with these things. Council will be required to investigate matters under Section 150AG of the Local Government Act. With the establishment of this committee, the decision to start, not to start or discontinue an investigation will be delegated. So council is given the authority under the Act to do this, the authority is going to be delegated to this committee. The Act also says council must have an investigation policy, which it does, however, this policy is now out of date, it doesn't account for the Ethics Committee undertaking to investigate, it still references the tribunal process, which is no longer in place. That's been scrapped under the amendments to the Act. So I've been advised, made some inquiries, I've been advised the new policy is or will be developed along with a process of investigation that will be brought to council before any matters can be considered by the committee, I assume that's the case anyway. I understand the intent is not for the committee itself to undertake the investigations, as we just saw the council did about an hour ago. So the, the role of committee won't be to physically formally themselves undertake the investigations, rather than, rather an independent investigation model will be used. I do think, given the Lord Mayor wanted nominations from me back in June, as I mentioned, the development of that policy may have been closer to complete, but there's obviously been some crossed wires in that process. The investigation policy and process of investigation is critical because once the investigation has been complete of a potential breach of the Code of Conduct, the committee must determine based on that finding whether a breach has occurred. So that investigation may say it's clear-cut, they may say it's not clear-cut, but it is up to the committee to determine whether a breach has occurred. And this is, this is what the Ethics Committee must do in that instance. 150AG of the Act states that, one, after conducting the investigation, the local government must decide, A, whether or not the councillor has engaged in a conduct breach, and, B, if the local government decides the councillor has engaged in a conduct breach, what breach, what action the local government will undertake to discipline the councillor under one, under Section 150AH. So, two, in deciding what action to take, the local government may consider any previous conduct, an allegation made in the investigation, whether that was admitted, challenged, whether the local government is reasonably satisfied it is true. These are all things for the committee now to determine. So depending on what the policy says, this is the critical bit. We can establish this committee, but we don't know what the policy around investigations is yet. The committee could decide to accept the results, the investigation, or not. While the Ethics Committee will be unlikely to investigate potential breaches itself, it will have the power to impose sanctions on councillors found to have breached the Code of Conduct. As this is the case, it is critical to ensure that councillors on this committee take this role very seriously and make determinations based on the principles of local government and what is in the best interest of the community, rather than on and what is in the best interest of the community, rather than on the instruction of others external to the committee. This is important because if a breach is found to have occurred, one of the following penalties must be applied. A, an order that no action be taken against the councillor. Or B, make one or more of the following, could be all of these. An order that the councillor make a public apology in the way decided by the local government for the conduct, read Ethics Committee. Two, an order reprimanding the councillor for the conduct. Three, an order that the councillor attend training or counselling to address the councillor's conduct, including at the councillor's expense. Four, an order that the councillor be excluded from a stated local government meeting. Five, an order that the councillor is removed or must resign from a position representing the local government other than the office of councillor. Example, a state board or committee, local government, committee, LGAQ perhaps. Maybe a chair, maybe a committee within council. Six, an order that if the councillor engages in the same type of conduct again, it will be treated as misconduct. Seven, an order that the councillor reimburse the local government for all or some of the costs arising from the councillor's conduct breach. Which could be minimal, could be extensive, we don't know because of the model and the policy has not been brought to us yet. So Labour councillors previously, as I said, determined natural justice was not followed in previous iterations of the Ethics Committee and interference had occurred. So made that decision to leave that committee. That option of course remains in place if the policy that is still under development is not adequate or if the process does not live up to the expectations of natural justice, as I mentioned earlier, which are now explicitly contained within the Act. That's not just some concept about natural justice. The Act explicitly contains the reference to natural justice must be followed in these investigations and any disciplinary action. So in summing up, today we will support this item and work cooperatively to ensure it's more functional than previously experienced and we don't experience a kangaroo court-like operation with an LNP majority in this council chamber. But that is again all dependent and our ongoing support for the Ethics Committee is all dependent on the policy around investigations and the process of which will be undertaken, which I assume, I can only assume, will come to full council next week or next session. But no matters will be able to be referred to the Ethics Committee, is my understanding, until that policy and procedure is in place.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the meeting adjourn for a period of 15 minutes which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Oh councillor Adam? Alan, councillor Alan?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item C, the Councillor Ethics Committee. Madam Chair, this committee is a legislative requirement under both the Local Government Act and the City of Brisbane Act. As the papers state, this committee will meet on an as-needs basis and it is certainly my hope that these meetings will be few and far between. Madam Chair, some in this chamber may not be familiar with the process to investigate councillor conduct and complaints. However, there is an extensive process to be undertaken before the councillor Ethics Committee will consider the outcomes from an investigation. As the Lord Mayor outlined, there have been some recent changes to the state's legislation and policy. This includes that council is no longer able to refer conduct breaches to the External and Independent Councillor Conduct Tribunal for Investigation. Madam Chair, this is a significant change and unfortunately the state hasn't provided, has provided only limited guidance on who and how investigations will now be undertaken. As those in the chamber can appreciate, investigations into potential conduct breaches by local councillors are not a common activity and does require a specialised approach. As such, responding to this change is something we are closely reviewing and researching to ensure any investigation is appropriate with transparent outcomes. And I can confirm for councillor Cassidy that a future ENC submission will be brought to the chamber once the changes and the investigative process has been agreed. So at the moment, we're looking at what mechanisms might exist to undertake the investigation, given that we can no longer refer the matter to the Councillor Conduct Tribunal. So the intention is to develop an investigative process. The expectation, but still to be confirmed, is that it'll be an external investigative process. The Councillor Conduct Committee has had a little bit of a chequered history in recent times, specifically with regard to membership. But I am however pleased to see that we will now have bipartisan support for the committee with the inclusion of opposition councillors. And I believe the composition of the committee is comprised of a good mix of people, personalities and experience. And the people involved have the experience, not only within council but externally, and can add a real breadth of experience to any deliberations that are required. And I believe that all members of the committee will be able to deliberate and make determinations in a measured, balanced and impartial manner. So Madam Chair, I am hopeful that the committee does in fact, when we do convene, can look at the results of any investigations, look to the potential responses that are available to the committee. They're the options that councillor Cassidy touched upon earlier. So I am looking forward to this committee meeting when the need arises and that the determinations of the committee at that point are considered to be fair and reasonable. And I commend the item to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items A, B and C. And I'll just make some brief remarks regarding all three items. Firstly, I don't support any of the items that have been brought forward here today. Firstly, with respect to the procurement policy and plan. This council's singular legacy for our city is its failure to properly manage contracts and in particular major project contracts. There is an epic failure of governance, accountability and leadership by this LNP administration when it comes to contract management. Now that is also a reflection upon council's capacity to undertake some projects. It is just not acceptable when major projects double in cost and that is because they are poorly scoped to start with. And we heard another great example today, the Beams Road project, where councillor Wines has indicated there are four sections to the Beams Road project. One A has currently been undertaken at a cost of $93 million. And when asked what was the total estimated cost of all four stages, councillor Wines didn't know, couldn't say, babbled a little bit, refused to say. So, you know, it's another indication of this council's failure to be transparent and accountable about how it delivers projects for the city. Now, the plan of course has to outline a number of major projects when they come forward. And it is astonishing how little information is provided in the report before us today. Council is suggesting that there are 14 construction projects that will happen this year. Of them, only three are major projects. The other are four classes of projects, like turf, trees, road profiling. And the three major projects that are listed are Victoria Park, the Beams Road upgrade and the Lindham Open Level Rail Crossing. That's it. Now, this also makes excuses that of course it's not an exhaustive list and that might change in the future. We know that because council has now set the budget up, the LNP has now set the council budget up as an LNP slush fund. And even when it comes to council planning and policies, we've heard today with respect to the transport plan for our city apparently for the next eight years, it hasn't even come to council. It's an LNP concept plan. And it's certainly being shopped to the media and to other levels of government as an approved council plan, and it's not. So there is a massive disconnect between what council says it does and what it actually does. So I do not support the way this council either manages its policies, manages its plans, and certainly I do not support the way that they botch major projects. Second one, Audit Committee Report. Yep, this just goes on and on. There are clearly serious problems with the way in which this council is managing its finances and we would not know what they are because of the way in which the minutes are presented to us. And we know the LNP like to change the minutes at their discretion, as councillor Hutton has done and councillor Wines has done, so that matters that are discussed in committees are not reflected in the minutes afterwards. So we don't know that we're getting, we're certainly not getting any detailed information about what's in the Audit Committee Report. And it's very hard to tell what's going on. But I agree with councillor Cassidy that this council is aware of major problems with the management of its finances and yet we're not seeing any significant outcomes or decisions come through the Audit Committee. And finally, the Councillor Ethics Committee. I don't support this process. I appreciate there's a statutory process we have to follow, but there are a number of things that the LNP is doing. The first of which is excluding both the Greens and myself as the independent councillor from even discussion in people to sit on the Ethics Committee. That makes it of course a partisan political committee. It's only got Labour and the LNP. There is no clarity around how investigations are to happen. There is no clarity around the referrals processes. There is no clarity around how councillors can participate in the process. It is a political witch hunt.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A and B. So item A is the annual update of our procurement policy and plan, which sets out how council conducts strategic procurement and contracting as is required under the City of Brisbane Regulation 2020/12. The policy and plan provides detailed information about council's procurement activities, ensuring council and ratepayers receive quality services and infrastructure with value for money always at the forefront. A key pillar of the Shrima Council's plan to support and grow business and industry in our beautiful city is our bi-local procurement policy. This policy backs Brisbane's businesses, ensuring local suppliers are given the best opportunity to deliver council services and projects. We have set a strong and accountable target for 80% of council's total procurement budget to be spent with Brisbane and South East Queensland located suppliers. Prior to the implementation of the bi-local policy in 2017/18, our local spend percentage was at 67%. But since mid-2019, just over $7 billion has gone directly into supporting local jobs and local businesses, including small and family-run businesses. Madam Chair, as the Lord Mayor set out earlier, we continue to not only meet this target but we are exceeding it. Last year, our local procurement spend was over 87%, which is a record spend of $1.67 billion. Council's strategic procurement team is focused on continual improvement and accordingly, there are amendments to this year's plan. The key changes are directed at streamlining the policy and as a result, we streamlined it in its length from 37 pages down to 15. Duplication and procedural elements will now be addressed in other procurement corporate rules, such as SP200 sourcing and disposals procedures and SP400 contract management and procedure. This approach makes this important document easier to read and engage with, not only for our staff and council, but most importantly with local industry. In addition to the streamlining of the policy, we've added a new principle. That is the leaders in procurement practice principle. This has been included to support and encourage a culture of continuous improvement in our processes, our capability and of course our performance. We must always consider what is the most efficient way to achieve the desired result and our policy now reflects this. We want to keep costs down to keep the budget balanced and support project delivery right across our city. The policy strives to lower the costs to procure without compromising value by enhancing systems and processes and by adopting a digital-first mindset. I've spoken many times in this chamber about council's achievements in supporting social enterprises through our procurement programme. Madam Chair, those on the other side of the chamber may call this outsourcing, but we see huge benefits in doing this as it supports important social causes and also provides employment opportunities for disadvantaged or vulnerable members of our community. Last year, we had a record number of different social enterprises work with council with an investment of close to $12 million. We maintain an $11 million target this year. Before I move on, if I could please highlight also for the chamber, Madam Chair, clause A, clause A.1.8 of the policy, which provides for the use of council businesses and staff. It states that, and I quote, "Council's preference is to use its own capable, competent and committed employees in providing services." And that council will continue to use its own employees where competitive levels of quality, service, efficiency, cost effectiveness and value for money can be demonstrated. Madam Chair, the vast majority of our workforce are permanent employees. But, just like all organisations, we engage with other suppliers and contractors where internal resourcing is not available or suitable to meet operational requirements or for project work, which might not...
Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. Further speakers? No further speakers? We'll now put them to the vote. Item A, all those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour, one against and six abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Against, no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and seven against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Now put item C to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division has been called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Matthew. Yep. Please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favour and three against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of August 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Adam M, that the report of the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 27th of August 2024, be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I go to the report from last week, I'll just advertise what's on in the Business Hub. We were down there this morning for the committee presentation, which I'll talk about next week, but I think everybody was suitably impressed about our beautiful facility we have down there and some of the feedback we've been getting from a recent event presenting at the Business Hub has been a game changer for my business. The connections have been incredible, and as a result, my business has grown exponentially, and that was Megan from Loon Marketing. So it's absolutely wonderful to see people taking the opportunity. As we heard from Reece today, there's been 300 new contacts since we've moved down there, over 1,300 new individual businesses over the few years that we've been with the Business Hub that has established since Covid, so it's fantastic. In the next week, on the 10th of September at 9:30 in the morning, it's the Women in Business Leaders Lounge, Gaining Unshakable Confidence. So join the CEO of award-winning Kies International and Leaders Lounge, Sarah Yip, for an interactive workshop that will help you refresh, revisit and redefine your values, purpose and set some inspired goals and actions for greater confidence and clarity. So that'll be great for the women that are alumni, those who are in the programme this year, and obviously any aspiring Women in Grants participants in coming years as well. Last week, committee presentation was the pop-up consulates presented by Irma, our International Relations and Multicultural Affairs. These have been extremely popular. Usually, people need to travel down south to get their visas to go overseas if there's no embassy here in Brisbane, and what we found that some of the honorary consuls up here and some of the Consular Corps have been working hard to take a couple of days here in City Hall so that people from around Queensland or even Northern New South Wales can travel up here to get their actual visas. And it's been fantastic. Malta was first off the ranks. They do a wonderful job. We work very closely with them. Netherlands took the opportunity, and we got the King of the Consuls. We've got the Americans here as well, which is absolutely fantastic. We've got quite a few coming up and far more countries interested in this. The time-saving, the money-saving for families not to have to travel to Canberra or Sydney to get their visas is absolutely amazing. The, as I said, the Consular Corps are loving it, the DFAT are loving it as well, and well done to the team for coming up with the concept, and I look forward to it expanding to many more countries in the near future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the presentation for the Economic Development, Nighttime Economy and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Importantly, that title, Paralympic Games. I was a bit disappointed in the committee presentation we received last week, particularly when councillor Howard was already jet-setting off to the Paralympic Games to represent this city. This committee is about the Olympic and Paralympic Games, and the presentation, not just the presentation, but the entire committee meeting went for seven minutes last week. It started at 10:02, so it's supposed to start at 10 and go till 10:30. The committee meeting started at 10:02, the attendance, apologies, minutes, presentation, questions and general business, all wrapped up in seven minutes. At a time, at a time disappointingly, when we could have had a presentation about preparations for the Paralympic Games, this nation's preparations for our campaign in Paris perhaps proudly, but no, we had a presentation about something the council doesn't deliver, pop-up consulates. We give space in the committee room, committee rooms upstairs, a great thing, but to have, I guess, the content of that could have been emailed to all councillors, and we could have had a presentation and a discussion about something important like the Paralympic Games, which were starting on the 28th of August and are currently on at the moment, but instead we got this presentation. So just very disappointed again that the Paralympics are missing out, and the team's doing very well, very well. It's great watching at the moment, but very disappointed that the Paralympics are missing out under this chair's leadership of this committee.
Further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you. Lovely to hear a speech about what was not in the committee last week from the councillor who won't even mention usually that we have anything to do with the Olympic and Paralympic Games. So I'm looking forward to when our officers do get back from the Paralympics, that we can talk about all our learnings and I can go through everything that I did in specific detail again, even though I've done that in general business for the last three weeks as well. The reasons it doesn't go for particularly long on some of the presentations is councillor Cassidy doesn't speak, he doesn't ask questions, and he definitely hasn't asked for any committee presentations that he would like to see.
We will now put that to the vote. Councillor Cassidy? You're right.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Did you just make a cat or a dog noise at me?
I said, rah, rah, rah.
No, I think it was, rah, rah, rah. I'm indicating what-
Thank you. Either way, it was inappropriate, councillor Cassidy.
But that loud injection, which I was trying to do, was appropriate.
The Deputy Mayor just got up and did a point of order, and I'm responding to the point of order, and you know that your response was inappropriate. And all councillors, unless you're standing on your feet and at the microphone, it's your turn, should not be calling out.
We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Report is carried. Transport Committee, councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of August 2024, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Parry that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 27th of August 2024, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Last week, the Transport Committee held a, had a presentation from TPO on our bus stop upgrade programme. Council owns and maintains almost 6,000 bus stops across Brisbane, which is a testament to the size and scale of our bus network. Of course, it means that there's a large amount of work involved in maintaining and upgrading bus stops, including our work to improve accessibility to them. In the last decade, this council has spent $100 million on accessibility and amenity upgrades to bus stop infrastructure, and that means 82% of our network is now DDA compliant, and 90% of passengers are using council's bus stop network from DDA-compliant stops. So a wonderful achievement, and I want to just pay tribute to former Lord Mayor Graham Quirk. Access and inclusion through all parts of council was a real hallmark of his time in City Hall, and this programme and its achievements are very much tied up with his time here in City Hall. Before I get to some other things, Madam Chair, I wanted to just update the chamber on the situation with BEAM Mobility. So as councillors may remember, we recently started our next-generation agreements for shared e-scooters and e-bikes on the 22nd of July 2024 with BEAM Mobility and Lime Networks. Prior to the current contract, BEAM and Neuron provided scooters in Brisbane and paid council per device. To help manage the number of devices across our city, we have an e-scooter cap, which defines the maximum number of scooters each provider can deploy at one time. We monitor device cap compliance via a third-party provider, and we audit the number of devices. On the 2nd of August, council received allegations in relation to BEAM and their operational approach to deploying devices against the device cap and the reporting of trips to that provider. The allegations suggest that BEAM was manipulating data shared with councils to hide the total number of devices available for hire. Council took those allegations incredibly seriously, and as soon as we received this information, we commenced an internal investigation. Late last week, we received the findings of that investigation, and they were incredibly disappointing, to say the least, Chair. Our investigation concluded that BEAM systemically exceeded its device cap in Brisbane. On average, BEAM deployed 500 extra devices across the city each and every day between July 2023 and July 2024. This means they exceeded their allowable device cap by more than 27%. As I mentioned, the previous contract saw BEAM pay council on a per-device basis. BEAM exceeding its e-scooter cap by this many devices is estimated to have resulted in approximately $330,000 in lost revenue to council. As a result, council has terminated its contract with BEAM effective from the 30th of August 2024, and the devices will now be progressively removed from Brisbane. We will also be seeking to replace BEAM with a new e-mobility operator as soon as practical. In the meantime, Lime will distribute additional devices to help fill any shortfall in Brisbane's shared e-mobility network, and as promised, council will also be seeking to refer the findings of its investigation to the Australian Competition and Consumer Commission. I want to reiterate that the issues experienced here by council are not unique to Brisbane. These allegations have been made about BEAM's operations in a number of cities across Australia and New Zealand, and a number of other cities have already taken steps to terminate their contracts with BEAM as well. While these matters are disappointing, we remain confident in the role that e-mobility has to play in the transport future of our city, and I want to reassure the public that these allegations, of course, don't pose any safety risks to the devices under our shared scooter scheme. These are obviously commercial and ethical matters. Madam Chair, in addition to that, we have a petition here in this report. So the committee also last week considered a petition on active transport over Cardross Street Bridge in Yorongga. Council does have a long-term plan to improve this connection over the railway line. However, any project here would require consultation with Queensland Rail because of the limitations of the dimensions of the railway bridge. As such, council wrote to Queensland Rail on the 24th of July to advise of petitioners' concerns and has requested any future plans to renew and upgrade the bridge to inform council's future planning. Chair, I also just briefly wanted to acknowledge our Bridges for Brisbane team and their work on the Breakfast Creek-Yuwagga Bridge. Last week, the project was announced as the Queensland winner at the Australian Institute of Project Management Awards, which is a fantastic gong for our Green Bridges team to have achieved. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on both items and ask item B is taken seriously. Item for voting purposes, please. Just with respect, very briefly on item A first, the bus stop upgrade programme. This is a great example of where council has missed the mark when it comes to improving access to public transport for people with disabilities or people with mobility issues. Council is treating the bus stop upgrade programme as, they're treating the bus stops themselves as islands. So all council will do is pop down the concrete, pop down a new J-pole, maybe change the seating configuration and pop in the tactiles. There is no consideration given to how people will get to that bus stop, and this council is not investing any funds in upgrading pedestrian access for wheelchairs or people with mobility issues to bus stops. In addition to that, of course, Brisbane City Council has still not completed its programme, and as far as I know, they're way behind schedule on what it should do. It's my, yeah, it's my understanding that there are just some bus stops that this council will not do at all because it is too expensive or too hard. And that is an indictment upon councillor Ryan Murphy's leadership of this portfolio for such a long period of time. We know that under his leadership of this portfolio, he stopped funding footpaths, and now the only funding available, if you want a footpath, is via the suburban enhancement funds. So this council has got its priorities wrong when it comes to this upgrade, and to make it work properly for residents, they need to consider connections to bus stops to make it easier for people with mobility issues to get to public transport. Bit like rail stations, you know, you need the zebra crossings to get across the road. But I also speak on item B, which is in Tennyson Ward. Now, I think the inappropriate comments this morning, or earlier this afternoon, from councillor Murphy about space for cycling, they were massively inappropriate. I talked to the bugs in my area, I talked to space to cycling, I talked to cyclists, I talked to community groups, and certainly there is a wide view about cycling. I have never once, never once had someone do the sorts of things that councillor Murphy has said, and, yeah, suggested. I just thought some of them were absolutely appalling, and I certainly respect the rights of cyclists to advocate for better facilities. And this petition came about because of requests from parents from Yorongga State School. The Yorongga State School catchment is split by two arterial roads, Fairfield Road and Ipswich Road, and the connectivity between the western part of Yorongga and the central part of Yorongga, where the school is located, are incredibly difficult. There is a bridge here that has a one metre wide, very old footpath, we're still waiting for that to be fixed, which is just so narrow and dangerous, and that is it. So residents are wanting improvements to this area, including bike boxes, including a dedicated cycling bridge or widening of this bridge, and it is incredibly disappointing that council is doing nothing. Now councillor Murphy stood up and said that there is a long-term plan to do something about this intersection. Well, no, there's not, because that's something I've been campaigning for in the LGIP, which council has not brought back to this place, and there is no position on the LGIP. So this is, yeah, it's well over a year since the process started, and yes, I and my community have been lobbying hard to have this fixed because this is the only east-west flood-free access for people who live in Yorongga and Yorongpili, and during times of flood, the queues stretch for kilometres. It is unsafe for pedestrians and cyclists in its current form. I'll just note a couple of things here. Council talks about a thermal detector. Well, the thermal detector did not work when I was told about this, so we had to go back to the CEO, council had to go out, and they had to fix the thermal detector. So unfortunately, councils told us something worked, and then the cyclists went and tested it, and it didn't. The next problem with what's been said is that council can't build standalone bridges. Yes, they can, and they do all over the city, mainly in LMP wards. They're called green bridges, and we could do one here-
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Further speakers? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on item A in regards to the upgrade of the bus stops. And anyone who knows and has listened to me over the years in regards to bus stops will know that I'm a strong advocate for- will know that I'm a strong advocate for bus stops and all that they can be. And I would hope Brisbane City Council would think the same. Now, if we have a look at the report and on item three, it states pretty clearly that council prioritises bus stops for upgrades based on the following framework. That's the right. Daily patronage and level of service to the community. Vulnerable user patronage and DDA compliance, which you heard about a little bit earlier. And amenities request, I'll just emphasise that one, amenities request and proximity to community facilities. Now, that amenities request, we've had a number of bus stops across my ward that have, people have been requesting shelters because they're pretty much in full sun. And the one I'm going to highlight is the one at Joseph Banks. It's called the Joseph Banks Bus Stop and it's the one that's on the way to Forest Lake Shopping Centre. Now, I highlight that one because we've had multiple requests over multiple years for that one to be made safe from some, you know, it should have a SunSafe application, which it does or should have because it's really at the end of an island that comes out of a footpath that was built to the bus stop when it was made DDA compliant and there's never been a shelter erected to protect the patrons. Now, this is on a, this particular route, right? There's two buses that actually go down this route, the 118 and the 100, which is, the 100 is a high frequency, so obviously a lot of people are using it. And of course, the 118 is also an express into the city. Now, kids, school kids use this bus during, obviously during before and after school and there's quite a lot of them actually out there that are actually using this particular bus stop. And again, they're in full sun. Yes, they should be wearing hats, but honestly, it's not quite, it's not very comfortable, of course. Can you imagine being in full sun in the middle of a Brisbane summer? So I would suggest that we should have another look at some of these bus stops, especially the ones in the full sun. A lot of the ones that people request are under trees, so the sun's not a huge issue, but the rain is, of course. But we've just got to do something to protect our kids at all. I mean, this is our future here. These kids deserve to have a shelter that they can hide, especially from the sun and of course the rain as well. So I just wanted to keep it local, as the Lord Mayor said. Speak local, about local issues. And I have, thank you, Chair.
Further speakers?
Yes, I, Madam Chair, thank you.
Councillor Griffiths.
I rise to speak on this Brisbane inclusive plan and just say what a farce it is. What an absolute farce it is. And I notice we, or councillor Howard's gone again, but she's just returned from the Paralympics. Just returned from Paralympics and we have such a pathetic record of dealing with people who have disabilities or accessibility issues. And this is just another example of how this council fails. And particularly what I find around my ward is the failing of accessible bus stops. And one of those bus stops, and give some examples, happy to give some examples because there is no action coming from the LMP, only fine words, only fine words. At Rockleigh, and I've raised this before, on Ipswich Road, we went through the farce of upgrading a bus stop, putting in new lighting, putting in the tactile tiles, raising it up. The only thing is we didn't connect it with the shopping centre. So there is no way that the person in a wheelchair or using a walkie-wheely can connect with the shopping centre because we've left a rocky dirt track. That's our accessible footpath. And councillor Murphy, you might be able to answer, how did you deliver so poorly on that? Through you, Madam Chair. For example, another lady or another person, another resident, Margaret, who's in Maruka, who's in a motorised wheelchair, has been taken to hospital on a number of occasions because when she goes up a ramp, the chair goes back. She cracks her head and she ends up in the emergency department. What's council's answer to that? Oh, they've built it the wrong angle. So we've got to correct the angle and bring it down to acceptable standard. This is what the LMP is delivering in Brisbane now. It is farcical, it's not good enough. And we're not delivering accessible footpaths all over Brisbane. Another point with another footpath was trying to get some trees trimmed. I had a blind gentleman who wanted to walk up the footpath to get to the bus stop and found it really disturbing that he kept getting hit by tree branches as he used his bra stick to go up the footpath. Council's response to that? Oh, send it to a senior manager and they'll sort it out. This is farcical, the way we're treating people with accessibility issues. You know, our own documents say up to a third of Australians with disabilities say a lack of access to transport can be a significant barrier to their inclusion. This is our own document, this is our own strategy, this isn't, well, it's an LMP strategy. I think it's an LMP strategy, not even a council strategy. And it actually goes on to say residents of all ages and abilities report that social inclusion is increased if they can get to the places and events that bring a sense of connection and belonging to their lives. Pretty amazing words. We just haven't got the amazing actions that go with those amazing words. And last year, when we brought up a motion to say that we, as councils, should be funding accessible footpaths, so footpaths that people require to get somewhere, the LMP voted that down. And they said, use your self-money, do it yourself. So what they're saying is essentially, if you've got a disability, go and plead with your local councillor and hopefully they'll provide you with a footpath or not. They didn't stand up and have the guts and the gumption to say, this is what you should have. This is what a first-world city provides. This is where we should be going. No, there was none of that talk, no grand vision. It was, no, we're not doing it. Our little hillbilly Hicksville LMP council struck again. And the difficulty with our little hillbilly Hicksville council is that residents with a disability keep missing out. There is nothing you should be proud of here, councillor Murphy. It's just all a sham.
Further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on the presentation to bus stop upgrades programmes because I think it's really important to note again that Brisbane City Council says one thing, but it also acts on another. And I think today I've very much experienced the hypocrisy of this LMP Brisbane City Council. And I'll specifically talk to the point of council prioritises bus stops for upgrades based on the following framework. Daily patronage and level of service to the community, one. Vulnerable user patronage and DDA compliance. Amenity requests and proximity to community facilities. I will highlight, there's many, many bus stops across the ward, but I will highlight one particularly that I think actually hits all of these things, but maybe I'm wrong, I'm not, by the way, I'll share this, that hits these things that still isn't DDA compliant. Last year, we were able to get a great win for this number 60 bus. And as everyone here would know, the number 60 is the most popular and well-patroned bus in Brisbane. It's one of the gliders, super popular. I'd call it the GOAT, except it's not because I still believe the 199 is the GOAT. The 60, the new bus stop was at Montague Markets. Montague Markets being an important point for what would we say is community facility, shopping centre, food access. The area near Montague Markets has had a dramatic increase of population and it continues to. The density of the area, if anyone's been down there, is actually really high. And of course, it's not just the 60 that stops here, which has the highest patronage of bus users in Brisbane, but also the 199. And this bus stop at the Montague Markets is not DDA compliant. There have been many requests to make it DDA compliant from various people that have accessibility issues, including Uncle Willie. There's times that I mention this multiple times when I had previously sat on the Transport Committee. So where is the upgrade for the Montague Markets bus stop in this year's budget? It's not there, obviously. It's not there and, you know, recognising there's a couple of upgrades to Gladstone Road's bus stops that are needed, especially one that's had a busted fence for over a year that's been reported by multiple community members. I think what we see here in this document is the dream of what Brisbane City Council would be, but all of us seem to have examples. All of us, and I mean this too, I don't think it's just us on the opposition that would have examples, but the silence is deafening from the administration. I think we all have examples. What we actually want is, are these bus stops as council, a council that works towards delivering DDA compliant bus stop, a council that works and makes sure that we've got sun safety. I'll talk about that more shortly. And a council that actually says what it means when it puts it in its document. It's important that we raise these issues because we read one thing, but we experience another. Not just we as opposition councillors, but we as people that use buses. And, you know, I dare ask the question, who caught a bus in today?
I caught the train.
Train? Anyone else catch a bus? I caught a bus. So I guess, I guess for us that use public transport system and use the buses, we'd like to see the actual work done on the ground, done in our community rather than just some words on paper.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the presentation around bus stop upgrades programme. And I think Graham Quirk would be pretty ashamed of where this council has landed when it comes to bus stop accessibility. Councillor Murphy described his vision for a more accessible Brisbane and the work that he started. And then when he handed that off to Adrian Schrinner and Ryan Murphy as the Lord Mayor and Chair of the Public Transport Committee respectively, that work seems to have stopped and dried up. We've heard local councillors talk about inaccessible bus stops in their community. I've got a couple top of my head. One on Craig Street, on the corner of Lebanon Street in Brighton. Had a gentleman talk to me just last week, last weekend, about his experience. He's lost both of his legs, is now in a wheelchair. He's able to use prosthetics sometimes, not at the moment though because he's had more surgery to remove more of what's left of his legs. So can't use those prosthetics. He also can't access that bus stop anymore because there are no ramps anywhere near it. There is no footpath leading to and from it. Another one, Brighton Terrace, on the corner of Wakefield Street. Beautiful new bus stop, fully upgraded, tactile pads, new shelter, great big space for people to alight from. Except there's no ramps anywhere, there's fig tree roots covering the footpath around it. So people with accessibility issues can't access a fully DDA compliant bus stop, according to the Brisbane City Council. So they are just two of the 18% of Brisbane's bus stops that are not compliant under council's own guidelines, under its access and inclusion plan, under the Disability and Discrimination Act. And they're also two, I'm sure, that this LMP council has not applied for an exemption for, under the DDA, under the Disability Discrimination Act. I was alarmed to recently find out that council isn't proactively seeking any exemptions under that act for stops that cannot be upgraded, let alone the ones that can be upgraded and they aren't. They're only doing it on an as-needs basis, I guess, when a complaint is received from a member of the public that that stop is inaccessible. So I don't, I find it interesting councillor Murphy's sort of funny numbers there saying, he claimed for a couple of weeks there that 90% of bus stops are disability compliant until we found out through a question I noticed last week, it was in fact 82%. And he's saying that 90% of passengers are light at a DDA compliant bus stop. But the simple fact is, on the LMP's watch, we've only reached 82% of our bus stops being accessible when we needed to have reached 100%. So it's a fail. He could roll his eyes all he wants over there, councillor Murphy, but it is a failure. The Disability Discrimination Act required all of those public transport facilities to be upgraded to a standard of which they are compliant. That's just talking about the bus stop itself, let alone the issues of access, let alone the issues of not enough footpaths leading to and from those bus stops to connect communities, whether they are people who are fully able to step off a bus and walk home or people who rely on other aids for their mobility. So it is, you just drive around any suburb in Brisbane, not just mine, not just councillor Strunks, councillor Kimms, councillor Massey's, councillor Johnson's, councillor Griffiths. Every single one of your suburbs would have an example where access and inclusion is poor. And it is disappointing to note that not one single LMP councillor has got up to talk about this in this report. According to them, their silence is deafening. According to them, everything is fine and they accept everything that this regime puts before them.
Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy, right of reply.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. That was an interesting debate, a few things to cover off on. Firstly, I suppose, let's start where councillor Cassidy finished. I note that he's left the chamber now, perhaps because councillor Cassidy's own statistics are pretty rubbery. And his own understanding of the Disability Discrimination Act is also pretty rubbery and he's on rocky ground. So what does the Disability Discrimination Act actually ask us to do? Well, nothing directly, however, it does have disability standards for public transport. And they are the standards that specify that we must have all parts of the public transport system accessible. And council has been working away at this for quite some time. We, in fact, as I mentioned, have 82% of the actual stops DDA compliant and 90% of stops, if you count it by passenger. It's not funny numbers, it's just a different way of accounting. You can use one of those figures, you can use the other one. Either way, we are well and truly one of the only councils in the country that has a figure anywhere near approaching completion of our bus stop infrastructure being disability compliant. And I note that councillor Cassidy was very critical of us, but he didn't mention anything about the state government. I wonder why that would be. Do you know, I'm going to make a prediction here and councillors, please hold me to this. Councillor Cassidy, who has never said a single word about the fact that only one-third of railway stations in this state are disability compliant, will be all about railway stations after October and he'll be holding the state government through this council to account about their lack of doing anything to upgrade railway stations to be disability compliant. So we're at 82%, 90% of passengers. The state is at one-third of railway stations and yet he would criticise us. So I'm sure he will have a lot to say about the state government after October, things that we've never heard from him before. It'll be actually fascinating study to watch. And I think we'll go, I think we'll show just what a true politician he is. A true politician, not a community person, but a true politician and warrior of the Labor Party. Now, a couple of other things, you know, councillor Johnson mentioned that we were way behind schedule in terms of DDA compliance. Rubbish. We are well in front of any other local government in this country when it comes to DDA compliance for our public transport infrastructure. It is actually the state who are well behind. And of course, we know why councillor Johnson wouldn't mention the state either because her best friend, Mark Bailey, former transport minister for eight years, is responsible for the parlour situation the state is in, in respect of DDA compliance.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I know, your claim.
I wouldn't want to be known as his best friend either, Madam Chair, but it is what it is. We know that we actually aren't required necessarily under the act... We know that we actually aren't required necessarily under the act to have every single stop upgraded and that is because in many locations, council would experience what the act calls hardship, where the cost is far too high or the impacts are far too great for us to upgrade that stop. It might be that it's in a heritage location, we would have to demolish a heritage structure in order to upgrade it. It might be that the grades are so great that the structure would be unwieldy. It may be that the cost is so high that it's not economically feasible. So we take that on a case by case basis, we are never going to reach 100%. That's the reality. No city will reach 100% because there are always edge cases where it doesn't make sense and it actually makes sense to relocate the stop rather than actually upgrade it. So, you know, councillor Johnson also made the claim that she'd never once been abused by a bug group member. Well, she's never been responsible for anything or made a decision about any bikeway, so of course, naturally, she's never been abused by a bug group member. In respect of Cardross Street, she mentioned a lot about the one metre wide shed path there and what a disgrace it was. She didn't mention it was on a QR rail bridge. She also didn't mention that she met with Mark Bailey out on site with Queensland Rail about the rail bridge. And again, didn't mention that he'd been the local member and the transport minister for eight years when nothing was done about that rail bridge and now here she is saying, oh, well, we've got to get something done about this rail bridge. She also didn't mention that she committed to Queensland Rail at that meeting that council would provide further feedback to Queensland Rail. So I have a letter from the CEO of Queensland Rail, Cat Stapleton, that said that councillor Johnson was at a meeting where she has apparently moonlighted as a council officer and said that she would get back to Queensland Rail on behalf of council. So no council officer even was at the meeting.
Your time has expired.
So quite extraordinary claims to councillor Johnson.
Councillor Johnson, your point of misrepresentation, please.
First point of order, claimed to be misrepresented. Thank you.
With respect to the first one, look, it's pretty hard to speak on an issue when councillor Murphy completely misrepresents you by making up juvenile statements like Mark Bailey is my best friend.
Point of order, Madam Chair, are we going to get another speech here or is it just going to be, you know, misrepresentation?
Thank you councillor. Councillor Murphy, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Johnson, your other point of misrepresentation?
Just to conclude that, Madam Chairman, that is a distinct misrepresentation of my comments on that item that we were debating, which was about the Cardross Street Bridge. Thank you. And the second point of order? I'm not quite sure what councillor Murphy thinks he knows, but yes, I have meetings with my state member and council officers to discuss projects in my local area to try and progress them, like every other councillor does in this ward.
We'll now put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Now put item B to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right and noes to my left, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and eight against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. While you're resuming your seats, I'll just acknowledge that we have some guests in the gallery. We have the Run Corn Rockets, two teams, I believe. And they are headed to our sister city Kaohsiung in Taiwan to play basketball, so we wish you all the very best. Thank you for joining us today. We'll now move to infrastructure, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of August, 2024, be adopted.
And as always, it's my pleasure to second it, Madam Chairman.
It's moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Timmy that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 27th of August, 2024, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Can I thank councillor Timmy for his enthusiasm, but also recognise the Run Corn Rockets and wish them all the best on their tour. Last week's committee heard the ordinary quarterly report from the major projects planning team, who are a constituent team of TPO. We heard from our new manager Bridget, who has taken over from long-serving manager Jamie. And it, the report gave us an update on their work, ensuring that the major projects in and around our city had as limited effect on the conduct of our transport system as possible. So I found it, as I always do, an interesting and informative update and one I look forward to again in the next session.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, just briefly, I asked a question during the presentation regards to, in regards to the metro and the tunnel. And I was, I was, I know, the chair said that that's not something that he can answer or the presenters can't answer. That comes under transport, I think it was. So I would have hoped that maybe the InfraCircuit Chairman would have maybe covered off on that during his, during his talk, maybe he can do that in his finish. But if he can't, well, maybe the Chair of Transport can come up, can get up and, and address that issue as well. Is he in the chamber? Oh, boy, he's about to leave the chamber? No, he's not. Anyways, no, he's about to give some information to the InfraCircuit Chair, which would be great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to speak in regards to the Queen's Wharf Containment Infrastructure Committee. This report notes the opening of the Neville Bonner Bridge and the Queen's Wharf. If you're wondering over the newly opened Neville Bonner Bridge to the Queen's Wharf, please take a moment of reflection. The Queen's Wharf's website claims it now controls more than 26 hectares across land and water. 26 hectares of our prime inner-city real estate and river gifted to a consortium, 50% owned by Disgrace Star Entertainment, that was found unsuitable to operate a casino in New South Wales just a few days ago, due to a massive money laundering and fraud. To be clear, as the Sydney Morning Herald has reported, Star Entertainment has been enabling suspected money laundering, organised crime, large-scale fraud and foreign interference within the Australian casinos. The casino was given two years to change its culture after the money laundering and fraud was revealed. The New South Wales Independent Casino Commission's Bell Report, released just last Friday, concluded had failed. As the ABC reports, Star Entertainment has a culture found to be rotten to the core. Additionally, in Queensland, Star Entertainment operators of Brisbane Casino pleaded guilty to 11 charges under the Casino Controlled Act 1982 in August last year. Star Entertainment Group has just in the last two days been suspended from trading on the Australian Stock Exchange after it failed to post financial results. Yet the consortium that is 50% owned by Star Entertainment gets to open up a brand-new casino and hotels in Queensland on prime public land gifted to them. We are talking about Queen's Wharf, which now is thoroughly linked to the corporate criminal behaviour, but is also a display of privilege and consumption of the very wealthy at its worst. This consortium, which includes Star Entertainment, suspected corporate criminals, were given 26 hectares, 10% of the inner-city for a casino aimed...
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I know councillor Chong Wah is very new in this place, but she needs to recognise that there is no privilege and she is sailing very close to the wind on not just impugning motive, but actually defamation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and yes, I do, I'm speaking councillor Massey.
Oh, sorry.
And councillor Chong Wah, I do remind you that there is no privilege in this chamber. Councillor Massey.
Just clarity on, the Deputy Mayor said defamation? Defamation from whom?
That's not a point of order. I do not uphold that point of order. Councillor Massey, do not call out across the chamber. Thank you. Councillor Chong Wah.
10% of inner-city for a casino aimed at luring high rollers with insulting wealth from across the world, the kind of high rollers at the heart of Star Casino, extensive money laundering. This development will include Brisbane's largest hotel ballroom with 1,500 seats, four luxury hotels with 1,000 hotel rooms. It will also have 2,500 gaming machines. Most of these game machines will of course be sucking people dry that are not wealthy, but actually just addicted to the dopamine generated by the machines, lights and sounds. For this honour council, I'm sure the Queen's Wharf is another wonderful example of public or private partnership that this law mayor is spooking for a real rehabilitated Mount Kutha quarry. Coincidentally, the Mount Kutha quarry is also 26 hectares, exactly the same amount as the 26 hectares of land and river that has been given to the consortium that now controls Queen's Wharf. I know the law mayor is looking for a private developers for the Mount Kutha quarry site. I hear that Star Entertainment may be looking for...
Councillor, can you please stick to what is actually in the report, please?
I hear that Star Entertainment may be looking for a new casino location when they're kicked out of New South Wales and that they have been so warmly welcomed in Brisbane. Through the chair, could the law mayor confirm there are no current negotiations with Star Entertainment for another casino in Mount Kutha?
Any further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, I just have to make a very quick contribution on this one and of course, I have to remind the chamber that when it comes to gambling, the single biggest contributor to any political party in Queensland is professional gambler Duncan Turpie, who donated $472,088 to the Greens, according to Electoral Commission of Queensland disclosures. And the Greens, on one side of their face, take enormous amounts of money from professional gamblers.
Point of order, one moment please councillor. Councillor Murphy, just one moment, please. Councillor Massey, point of order.
Just a question for clarity, we've often been told to speak to the report? I don't believe, I don't believe it's mentioned to the report.
Councillor Massey, I, I do, councillor Massey, no. I'll give you my ruling, I do not uphold your point of order. It is, it does raise the casino, we're talking about the casinos, et cetera. Thank you very much. Councillor Murphy.
Well, again, Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that an inner-city project is Star Casino, it was covered off well by councillor Chong Wah in her five minutes. And one of the casinos that has put a lot of money into Greens' coffers is the casino in Hobart, in which Duncan Turpie made a lot of money because he was a professional gambler. He made that money in a casino, he then put that money in his bank account, then he put it in the Greens' bank account and they accepted almost half a million dollars from him. So, you know, one side of the face, gambling bad. And when we're getting money from professional gambling, gambling fine, gambling good, no problem. So I just wanted to make that point, Madam Chair, because I know it doesn't really relate to this report, but a debate is a debate and in this chamber, I think it's important that we can have that free exchange of ideas respectfully.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you Chair and just to tie that off, I agree with councillor Murphy about debate. I've said that before and I think, you know, asking for a ruling but also accepting the debate is a wonderful thing and should be important in this chamber. It's a shame that sometimes debate can be very one-sided with the mega majority. Nonetheless, nonetheless, here we are. Thanks Chair, I rise to speak on the Infrastructure Committee report. Obviously, there's a lot going on and there's, with the limited time that we have now, five minutes, I'll focus particularly on just a couple of things because I want to make sure that I'm able to speak on them. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge will be essential in enabling accessibility for Kangaroo Point residents. It's also a positive addition as an active transport route, particularly for residents from east Brisbane and beyond. The bridge will also serve as an entry point for people across Brisbane to access Kangaroo Point, which is currently the densest suburb in Brisbane and suffers from a chronic shortage of efficient, frequent public transport. I know a lot of hope has been placed on this bridge by Brisbane City Council Administration and the ALP State Government to kind of alleviate this chronic shortage of frequent and efficient public transport. We know, I know this because in my advocacy, my grassroots local advocacy, yeah, I'll take that interjection, that laugh, from the deputy mayor, for buses and city cats in Kangaroo Point to both levels of the government, to both levels of government, they have both told me, in my advocacy, we are waiting to see what happens when the Green Bridge opens. And one thing is clear, and I think anyone with common sense would know, before the Green Bridge opens, is that it is not an all-encompassing solution. We know not everyone will have the spare 40 minutes to an hour, that's how it takes, how long it will approximately take to walk across the bridge back and forth, because life happens. There are household delays, kids will need to be dropped off at school. We know that it will rain sometimes and on other days it will be stinking hot. The council must deliver the public transport that Kangaroo Point needs to complement the Green Bridge. What this can mean is people can use the Green Bridge in the morning to walk to the city and catch a ferry or a bus home, or vice versa. This is important. We need the public transport for the densest suburb of Kangaroo Point to be a part of what is delivered with the Green Bridge. And I think this is super important and, you know, to go on about something that councillor Murphy through you, Chair, mentioned earlier today. The last week of winter had temperatures of over 30 degrees. That was, that's a fair point from councillor Murphy, it really did. I mean, today is the third day of spring and it was also over 30 degrees. And so what we have here is the fact that not everyone can walk over this Green Bridge. But most importantly than that, that heat is a huge issue for what will be the opening of Victoria Bridge. It continues to be incredible and pretty unbelievable that Victoria Bridge will open soon for pedestrians, bike users and scooter users without any shade. With Queensland being the capital for skin cancer, where is our obligation for care and respect for residents to provide sun safety? I'll take that interjections for councillor Strunk and same for their bus stop. Does this care for residents and is only decided by the LMP administration when it thinks that it's useful politically? Victoria Bridge needs shade, the council should be implementing this work and from what I understand, most of the work to actually reinforce the bridge to include the shade has actually been delivered. The project was announced as delayed when council cut its budget by a tenth in November 2023 and yet here we are, a new budget and still no shade for the bridge. This is unacceptable. We have an obligation, as has been mentioned multiple times today, for our residents.
Further speakers? No further speakers, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just in response to a couple of comments there, can I begin by apologising to councillor Strunk and so I sincerely can't recall his questions, but if you provide them to me in writing, I will get him an answer. But on the other contributions, councillor Chong Wah has made a number of impassioned pleas in this place, saying the Green Party loves the pedestrian bridges and when would they ever criticise them? Well, there was councillor Massey criticising them at length, saying that they weren't, that they were kind of hot and no one's going to give them...
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Misrepresentation.
I know your...
No matter how colourfully she says the word misrepresentation, it is true. No matter how colourfully she says the word misrepresentation, it is true, that's exactly what she just did. She stood in this place and said, oh, it's a bit hot, people aren't going to use it, they'd rather sit in an air-conditioned bus. So this is what we mean, that they are a party who come into this place and tell the public what, that all their wildest dreams will come true and then they come in, that's what they say in the public, they come in here and fight against it. That's the truth. Now, and there's few better examples than councillor Massey just now, saying that that bridge will not be popular in Kangaroo Point, which makes no sense.
Point of order, misrepresentation.
I note your point of misrepresentation, councillor.
It is a hundred percent what she said. And she, and she is welcome to use a little addendum speeches after I'm finished to try and correct me, but she said in this place that she did not support the bridge, that councillor Massey did not support the bridge, that her residents will not use it. And that is the same sort of attitude that we see when you see people like retired councillor Sri Ranganathan fighting the West End bridges, fighting the landing pads where you need these bridges to be. I think councillor Chong Wah should really take some time and work out the people that she's actually associated herself with. Because she clearly, when I hear her speeches, hear her read her speeches, she's clearly got a very clear set in her head that Liberal bad, Green virtuous. That's very much her and, and it's very difficult for her to break out of that, but I would challenge her to consider some of the things that her colleagues have said in the past, say currently and do today. Now, one of the things that, while listening to councillor Chong Wah make a miraculous leap from talking about the state government's resort and casino facility, that somehow she's, I think, calling for one in the Mount Kutha quarry?
Councillor, I do remind you and all councillors to please refer to councillors with their proper title.
Excuse me, I sincerely apologise. The councillor Chong Wah is trying to make some bizarre association, once again, another great example of how the Greens will campaign for the renovation of a quarry but will not actually support any proposal that occurs in that place and will fight it the entire way. And also I have to remind councillor Chong Wah that that casino is very much supported by the state Labor government and a state Labor government who have the publicly stated one hundred percent support of the Green MPs in the state parliament. So they have said, both, the MPs, both Berkman and McMahon have both said that under no circumstances would they support a Chris O'Farlane government in a hung parliament. So that means that push comes to shove, at the end of the day, the Greens back that casino, one hundred percent, they back that, they back Miles, they back that casino. That is, that is the truth. And if, and I, once again, I don't think councillor Chong Wah quite understands who she signed up with, because that is a hundred percent how it works. But I must say, perhaps I am giving councillor Chong Wah too much of the benefit of the doubt, because when I listened to her speech, I couldn't tell if she was critical of Queen's Wharf or jealous she wasn't in on it, because it was very difficult to decipher where she actually was. And as quite rightly councillor Murphy points out, the Green Party is very, very keen on the support of professional gamblers. A point that was left, it had by councillor Murphy, is that winnings by professional gamblers have to come from the losers. There is no, in a casino, there is no magic pot of money at the back, the money that the professional gamblers that support the Green Party, that money comes from the people who do not win at the casino, the people who are addicted to the, who have the dopamine addiction that councillor Chong Wah, I suppose, was critical of. But again, that dopamine addiction she was criticising funds her and the other campaigns of the Green Party and she should not forget that.
Councillor Massey, your two points of misrepresentation.
Thanks, I'll just, I mean, I'll quote this twice, so this is what I said earlier, the Kangaroo Bridge will be essential, enabling access for Kangaroo Point residents. It's also a positive addition as an active transport route particularly for residents from east Brisbane and beyond. That's, doesn't sound like I was rejecting it, does it? That's my first point of order. And then my second, I just wanted to do a dramatic pause. We're all having a laugh, aren't we? It was dramatic pause, right? My second point of order, and again, I will quote, we know that not everyone will have the spare forty minutes because life happens and delivering public transport will complement the Green Bridge and enable other access routes, that's what I said.
We'll now put the report to the vote, all those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee.
Thank you Madam Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Wilt, that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-seventh of August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you Madam Chair, item A was a committee presentation that provided an update on recent changes to state planning legislation that will have serious implications for council and potentially our communities. Three changes were discussed and these included the changes to the planning regulation for rooming accommodation, the Housing Availability and Affordability Act and finally the multiple legislative changes with regards to the discrimination of sex work businesses. Regarding rooming accommodation, council is prohibited from making development accessible if building work is in low-density residential or low-medium density residential zones, not more than five bedrooms and five occupants, not involving a basement or an underground parking area, not on the local heritage register and providing landscaping between the building and front boundary with no relevant overlays. As a result, if the proposed dwelling meets the criteria I've outlined, it can be built in more places, especially in low-density residential zones. As local councillors, we understand local concerns and amenity impacts that these types of developments may and will have. Unfortunately, as these changes were made by the state, there are limited mechanisms for council to restrict this type of use. Many of the controls the council previously enjoyed have been removed. Also discussed during the presentation was the new Housing Availability and Affordability Act, which commenced in April. Key changes included the planning minister's powers to direct council to amend our planning scheme without notice, easement and acquisition powers and state heritage places cannot be dual-listed as a local heritage place. Also included in the act is the establishment of a state facilitated developments pathway. Through this application pathway, the state will assess and declare developments that are predominantly residential and include at least fifteen percent affordable housing. However, what is concerning is there doesn't, doesn't appear to be any assurances that the current settings in city plan, such as zonings, heights, setbacks and landscaping, will be adhered to in the approved development. Additionally, the planning minister will decide if public notification is required for a state facilitated development. Finally, there are no appeal rights for any party, whether they be the applicant, council, third parties and specifically the community, following the decision by the planning minister. Over the past week, council has received notices that seven sites were being considered for this pathway in the Brisbane local government area and these included thirty-three Manning Street Milton, seventy to seventy-eight Craft Road Palara, forty to sixty, sixty Woodvale Crescent and two hundred and fifty, two hundred and five A Wagaroo Street Forest Lake, thirty to forty-four Station Road Indrapilly, six hundred and twelve Lutwich Road and fifty-three to fifty-seven Lamington Avenue Lutwich and six hundred and fifty-two New Cleveland Road Wakely and a hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy-eight Logan Road Woolen Gabba. So all of these particular applications are currently being considered through this new state facilitated development pathway and we might end up with decisions that are quite inconsistent with city plan. I'd also note that council has just fifteen days to provide any feedback to the state. So Madam Chair, whilst we support the state's efforts to fast-track housing, housing in the wrong locations without appropriate community consultation may lead to adverse amenity impacts whilst creating precedents for poor planning outcomes in the future. Finally, the legislative changes made to decriminalise sex work businesses were also discussed. These changes were effective from the second of August and the key impacts as a result of these legislative changes include that brothels are no longer a land-use term with the new administrative term sex work business being introduced. A sex work business will be considered as either a shop or a home-based business with a maximum of two workers and two visitors at one time for a home-based business. A sex work business still needs to comply with relevant requirements relating to car parking, hours of operation and scale. Assessment of home-based businesses is capped at code and not an assessable development. This will result in the, in no longer having a public notification needed for these types of businesses and so they can commence pretty much anywhere in the city. Future amendments to city plan must not specifically target sex work businesses and this includes no zoning or location requirement.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired, are there any further speakers? Councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you Chair, I would like to speak on the Housing Availability and Affordability clause A of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. We saw with Carilpa TLPI how easy it is, how easy it was for this LMP council to circumvent the city plan under the guise of the temporary planning instruments. We also saw how useless it was in actually generating affordable housing or urgently increasing housing supply. Now the Queensland state government has decided to go even further and pass this completely autocratic legislation instead of building more social and public housing. Many councils have expressed deep concerns about this legislation, including this city council in their submission on the bill in October last year. Even this LMP administration, who are fond of bypassing the planning system, submitted that this legislation represents a significant reduction in local communities' participation in the planning system. The Australian LMP and Labor governments at all levels have created the worst rental housing crisis since the Great Depression. So what do you do when you have successfully created a national crisis? Throw away the whole planning system to allow developers to build anywhere they want, whatever they want, as long as they offer a measly fifteen percent affordable housing? But even the definition of affordable housing in this legislation is vague, without any guarantee that will remain affordable over the long term. This legislation allows big wealthy developers, whose only interest is to create massive profit margins, to completely bypass local planning requirements. These are not the people that are going to provide the type of affordable housing people desperately need. You know there is something wrong with the legislation when it is warmly welcomed by the property council. The property council and the state government would have you believe that these autocratic powers are required to fast-track development applications. Yet we all know the number one reason for a lack of development is that developers are land banking, even more than usual in this inflationary environment. This LMP council found that out with the attempted Carilpa TLPI, that bypassing the planning system doesn't just translate into increasing the housing supply.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I believe councillor Chong Wah is imputing motive by saying bypassing the planning system. You can't do that and if she has any evidence of that, she should be taking it to the triple seat.
Again, councillor Chong Wah, you, there is no privilege in this chamber.
We know that there are currently sixty thousand vacant blocks of land in southeast Queensland that already have development approvals but are not being built on. A vacancy tax would achieve so much more immediate housing supply than this legislation. The reality right now is that approximately one hundred and fifty thousand households in Queensland have unmet need for social and affordable housing. This legislation and a few greedy developers will not solve that. Over twenty-five thousand households are waiting for truly affordable housing on the Queensland Social Housing Register. This legislation does not even attempt to solve that. There are more than ten thousand homeless people in Brisbane tonight. This legislation and greedy developers who care more about land banking profits will not solve that.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen. We'll now put the report to the vote, all those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, twenty-seven August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks, that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-seventh of August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you Madam Chair, last week's committee presentation was on the old windmill tower located on Wickham Terrace at Spring Hill. The mill was constructed in eighteen twenty-eight, it's not only Queensland's oldest standing building, but it's also the oldest convict-built structure in the state and is now listed on the Queensland Heritage Register. Its main purpose when first established was for grinding grain into flour, which provided a reliable food supply for the city. And once milling operations had ceased in eighteen forty-two, it was converted into an observatory with a time ball installed to provide a central authority for regulating clocks across the city. But it wasn't until nineteen twenty-two that the mill was placed under trusteeship of the Brisbane City Council. A fun fact during the presentation, Madam Chair, was that in nineteen thirty-four, the mill became the site of the first television broadcast in Queensland. It was on a screen eleven centimetres wide, about the size of a mobile phone today and the first image seen was that of Mickey Mouse, followed by a picture of then Hollywood actress Janet Gaynor. The mill has been subject to several restorations, improvements over the years, most notably in nineteen fifty, where significant works occurred on the site, including the removal of the cottage and sheds as well as the re-rendering of the entire structure. And further works, of course, were carried out in two thousand and nine in the lead-up to the Q150 celebrations. We also heard Madam Chair about the graffiti conservation project. For over two hundred years, the mill has seen many people through, with many visitors often leaving handwritten inscriptions on the interior walls of the tower and these inscriptions, which are often referred to as graffiti, were done using lead pencil, ink or chalk, so that people recorded their names, their initials and sometimes the date, the earliest, their dates back to nineteen oh four. With some of these inscriptions being over a hundred years old, council sought to implement the graffiti conservation project to protect it as well as assess and document it. The mill is considered one of council's most historic public assets and currently the mill can be viewed and explored during Brisbane Open House, which was held earlier this year in July. The council is also currently looking at ways to increase public access whilst ensuring the conservation of its historical significance. The committee also noted the Bushland Preservation Levy Report for the financial year ended June two thousand and twenty-four and I'll leave further debate to the chamber, thank you Madam Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers, we'll put the report to the vote, all those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Hutton, City Standards Committee.
Thank you Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of August, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair, last week we had a wonderful presentation by our Waste and Resource Recovery team on batteries and household waste. Improper battery disposal is an issue impacting not only the Brisbane City Council but the entire waste industry. Chair, many residents are unaware of the dangers of placing batteries in household bins, which can lead to fires and explosions, also known as hot loads. With the rise in electronic devices like vapes, e-scooters and e-bikes, it's important more than ever to ensure that batteries are disposed of safely. So our message is very simple, batteries do not belong in bins. Whether it's a double A battery or a car battery, they need to be kept separate from household waste and taken to one of our council resource recovery centres or disposed at many of the outlets where you can put household batteries, at Woolworths or Aldi or Coles, are easy places for you to dispose of these batteries. Over the past five years, we've seen one hundred and forty rubbish fires, many triggered by batteries and other flammable materials that should never have been placed in the household bin. The Shrima Council offers free battery recycling all year round at our resource recovery centres and I might also note that they allow vapes now to be disposed of at our resource recovery centres. We also run Household Hazardous Waste Days throughout the year, where residents can safely dispose of batteries, chemicals and other dangerous items. The next Household Hazardous Waste Day is actually coming up on the seventh of September, from seven thirty till three thirty at Chandler Resource Recovery Centre. This is all part of our Towards Zero Waste strategy and we are looking for ways to partner with the community and to look at other ways of recycling batteries. Now Madam Chair, that leads me to acknowledging a young lad that has been in the chamber here for the last couple of hours, a young man named Riley Hughes, who was in grade ten at Maris College. Now this young man is a bit of a waste warrior and is starting his own e-waste- Now, this young man is a bit of a waste warrior and is starting his own e-waste and battery recycling at his school. So it's wonderful to have you here, and thank you for being part of the chamber today. I look forward to working with other young people like this to solve the massive problem of battery waste recovery. Thank you.
Further speakers? We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The report is carried. councillor Atwood, Community and the Arts Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of August 2024 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Atwood and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee dated Tuesday 27th of August 2024 be adopted. councillor Atwood.
Thank you. Before I move to the committee report, I'd like to congratulate three incredible Brisbane City Council staff members: Duncan Lynch, James Henderson and Mia Hodges from our award-winning Contact Centre, who were finalists at the AusContact Queensland Awards on Friday night. We are always so proud of our incredible Contact Centre. Their dedication to Brisbane is an inspiration, and we are so fortunate to have such a passionate team in our Contact Centre. James Henderson was a finalist for the Business Analyst Reporting Professional of the Year. Mia Hodges was a finalist for Customer Contact Professional of the Year. And a very special congratulations to Duncan Lynch, who was awarded Operational Support Officer of the Year for Queensland. Such a huge achievement, and as the category winner, Duncan will now represent Brisbane City Council at the National Awards in November. But to the committee report, we had a wonderful presentation from Jackie Ryan, the artistic director of the Brisbane Writers Festival. This year's event was held from the 30th of May to the 2nd of June, and it hosted 190 artists, including 76 Queensland authors. We are so proud to support the Brisbane Writers Festival, and it's great to see it go from strength to strength every year, and 2024 was no exception. I enjoyed attending the opening ceremony this year with Jackie, and despite a reduction in the duration from five to four days, the Brisbane Writers Festival achieved record ticket sales this year, with more than 30,000 people attending the 150 sessions. I'd like to thank Jackie and her team for the incredible work they do each year in organising the Brisbane Writers Festival, and I can't wait to see what they have in store for us in 2025. Thank you.
Any further speakers? We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of August be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Wong that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday 27th of August 2024 be adopted. councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Before I get to the report, I wanted to take the opportunity to address a couple of matters to councillors in the chamber, but unfortunately I see there are a few missing, so hopefully they will have a look at the minutes. So regarding the debate earlier this afternoon on wards and newsletters, I thought it was important to just set that record straight. Because the official guideline on this, Madam Chair, is very clear. councillor Massey has said that councillor support approved the content of the newsletter in the chamber today. And in The Australian Today, a Green spokesman said it was authorised by council officers. I would welcome councillor Massey tabling evidence of this during general business for all councillors to see if this is actually the case. Councillor Support is called councillor support for a reason. They provide support, advice and guidance. What this team does before payments are processed or a purchase order is processed or issued is to ensure that all documents, including artwork, are provided. This process is written into the guideline, and it's what any ratepayer would rightfully expect. The councillor support team always strives to provide help and support. And during the payment or reimbursement process, they may seek to provide feedback or point things out to councillors and our ward staff to keep us on the straight and narrow, and we certainly thank them for that. However, as I have said, and as the guideline makes clear, responsibility lies with the councillor to ensure that they comply and meet resident expectations. So again, if councillor Massey maintains the content that's been discussed today was approved and authorised by councillor support, then can she table that evidence and advice? Because councillor Massey was very confusingly suggesting that she was censored. But simultaneously, she says councillor approved the content of the newsletter. So which one is it, Madam Chair?
That's a misrepresentation.
I note your point of misrepresentation. councillor Cunningham.
So if councillor Massey wants to publish inflammatory material, she should not be outraged when it's called out or when she has to defend it. It is completely fair...
Point of order. Another misrepresentation.
I note your misrepresentation.
It is completely fair for us to question an excessive payment to an activist for nearly $3,000 for 28 hours of work at an average of 27 words per minute. And it is incumbent on the administration, as leaders of our city, to call out a councillor and a party who seek to fan the flames of division and antisemitism. Now, to another matter, just briefly. In the E and C debate, councillor Cassidy again made some quite embarrassing innuendo around depreciation and our financial statements, and suggested that I hadn't addressed it. He may not have been listening when I explicitly addressed it last week, so I'll say it again. There are clear rules under the accounting standards as to how we handle depreciation, and we're required to annually review the replacement value and the term of the useful life of our assets. This is a process which is overseen vigorously and vigorously reviewed by the Queensland Audit Office. Costs are rising, and it should not be surprising to anyone that the replacement value of assets has gone up. Ultimately, changes in depreciation are recognised in the financial statements and are just part and parcel of running a large organisation and a large council. councillor Cassidy's intimations that's being done with some kind of ulterior motive is just completely wrong. I found it extraordinary that in debating the final operational plan report for the past 12 months last week, all they had to talk about was non-cash accounting treatments. If depreciation was their main concern, maybe things aren't so bad about, aren't so bad out in the suburbs, Madam Chair, contrary to what they say in this place, week in and week out. Briefly on the committee presentation, it was about financial assistance grants. It was a great presentation, and I want to thank everyone, especially...
councillor Cunningham, your time has expired. councillor Massey, your points of misrepresentation.
Thank you. The first point of order for the misrepresentation is my statement was earlier today that the actions of the council using this emergency motion is censorship. That's what I said. I didn't say that they were censoring... Well, yeah, the censorship of the motion. The second point of order is that I am not outraged at all. I'm not surprised that this LMP council would do this and conflates Zionism with antisemitism.
We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. It's carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? councillor Cassidy.
Chair, I have a petition requesting council implement traffic calming measures on Rowland Street and Solace Street. Chief Wang.
councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'm tabling a petition on behalf of Chelma residents, calling for a noise mitigation barrier at the end of Victoria Avenue, Chelma.
councillor Allen.
Madam Chair, I have a petition seeking to name a footbridge in Wavell Heights.
councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office of the independent assessor or councillor ethics committee order? We'll now move to general business. Are there any speakers? councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on the Algo Queensland Conference that I had the pleasure of attending last Monday and Tuesday. So Algo is the Australian Local Government Women's Association, the Queensland branch, of which I'm delighted that the Lord Mayor has made me their representative for our team. It was a great event, held over the two days out there at the Brisbane Airport, so there was no travel costs involved. I just want to put that out there. We had an emcee, her name was Kim Scuberus. She's a very exuberant person, and a former journalist of over 25 years, and I note that she was actually here in the city on Friday, yes, for the Dress for Success rally that was being held. It was interesting to note that the first meeting of Algo was actually in Ferntree Gully, which is 73 years ago. We had a range of speakers. We had Renee from BDO Australia. That's a company that specialises in public accounting, tax consulting and business advisory firms. We had Sharon Scriven from Energy Queensland. We had Ian Wright from CPB, which is Colin Biggs Paisley, who was a lawyer. I wasn't exactly riveting his speech and conversation, but nevertheless, he was there, and he's a senior partner for Planning Government Infrastructure and Environment Group. My favourite speaker of the two days was Alison Smith. As you know, she is our CEO of LGAQ, and I have a lot of respect for her in that position. She did mention a couple of things. One of that was the declining number of candidates that were putting their hand up, obviously particularly female Alison was talking about, for mayors, councillors and CEOs, and sort of put the question to the room how that might be better addressed. She had a fabulous quote, which I will have to put out here in writing, so it's in the minutes, and her quote is, "Federal government has all the money, state government has all the power, and councils have all the problems." I thought that was just nailed it, absolutely nailed it. So I'm going to do that up in a little frame and put in my office. We also, they're doing, LGAQ is doing a vote for local campaign, and they've got eight key themes: so better local infrastructure, energy and community transformation, reducing costs of living, building safe and resilient communities, protecting the environment, stronger councils, addressing the housing crisis and empowering First Nation people. And that was the order that it was listed in importance according to everyone who responded to that particular submission. We also had a lady by the name of Fiona Cullen, who was a local government management association. I have to say, I've never actually heard of that organisation before, and none of the other people in the room had either, so she had to explain herself a little bit about what she did in her role. And she was actually an original Olympian, a hurdler. And she did mention that she thought likened a councillor to being a hurdler, where you have to overcome your fears for many different things. We had Jo Stuart Ratley, who specialises in AI cybersecurity. She's had 25 years in that department, and she talked about her work with council on a broad range of issues, including banking, finance, utilities, manufacturing, churchill education, retail and healthcare. We also had Melissa Dower and councillor Pi Augustine, both from Ipswich Council, who talked about, obviously, the issues and the dramas they went through with the dismissal of council in 2018. And I also want to end by saying congratulations to councillor Natalie Wilcox, who's in Logan. They had their AGM on the Monday night. She is our new rep for Zone Four, which we are all in Zone Four. And she's already got to work on the day of the convention and started updating the Facebook page and everything. So I made the promise to her that I would talk about not only the meeting and the organisation here today in chambers, as is required under council law, but also want to encourage all the female councillors in this place to join the organisation. Thank you very much.
Further general business? councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of items, community events and one reflection. First of all, I just want to pay tribute to the Forest Lake Lions Club, who has entered their third year in undertaking a barbecue on a Saturday and Sunday every week at the Crossacre Nursery. Now, it doesn't take the full club to actually undertake this particular barbecue, but I mention it because it's a huge commitment for a service organisation to commit to that barbecue. And I should say, they're just entering their third year, I think it is now. And I've had the allocation of, and I'll be there on Saturday, actually, to help out myself, of course, because it's, even though I'm not a voting member of the club anymore, I'm an associate, but I still try to, still try to help out where I can. Because, you know, we do have very busy jobs, so I have been able to commit myself to all the events over the last eight years. Anyways, also, I want to give a plug to a, recently, the Forest Lake Lions, they go out for a monthly birthday to celebrate those birthdays in that month. And we ended up at a place called, and maybe most of you probably haven't heard, it's called Boss Hogs. And believe it or not, it's at Tenergy Park at Carroll Park, Boss Hogs. It's an awesome place. I'll tell you what, it's got the best spare ribs in Brisbane, especially the pork ones. I could have had two racks, but I didn't. But it was, it's at Tenergy Park at Carroll Park industrial estate. And it's an interesting place to have a restaurant in industrial estate, but they've been there for about 10 years now, actually. And they've really, they've really built up a decent clientele. And on the, on the final point of the reflection regards to approval by ward support staff, it's been a practice I've found since I've become councillor, and that on every occasion that we're going to put out a newsletter or put an ad paid for by council in the local Lake News, right, that we, that we had to get an approval, right? Now, when I say an approval, what the process is, that we send it into them, and then they come back to us with feedback and say, no, we're probably not going to pay, we won't be paying that, right? Because of this issue or that issue. One that stood out to me was a petition that we ran for rates, which I believe were too high. We put it into the Lake News. But the petition actually stated that the, that the Lord Mayor, right, we petitioned the Lord Mayor, and they said, if you change that wording, right, we will approve it. Right? That's the one that really sticks out in my mind. And we did, and the petition was very, very well received, and we got a number of thousands of signatures. But anyways, that's, that's been, that's been, that's been my reality of what actually happens with that. We probably do have, we probably do have emails over the years, because I have a ward advisor who keeps everything, everything that I say and everyone else, you know, everything that we receive. She keeps everything and has done since 2016. So I can probably dig that out. But anyways, I just wanted to, just to say to councillor Cunningham, in practice, that is actually what happens. It may not be written down that way, but that in practice, that's actually what happens. And you're a bit foolish if you don't follow what they say, right? And we have always had, and we've always had every one of our bills paid by council. And we, and I thank them for being able to tell me that, right? I don't think it's a bad thing, but that's in practice what actually happens. Thank you, Chair.
Further general business? councillor Wolf.
Griffy, thank you very much, Chair. I rise to speak about numerous community events in the Walter Tail Award in the past month of August, including the Tuang Hands and Heart Fair, the Lexord South Dog Off Leash opening and the Witten Barracks Open Day. Firstly, a heartfelt congratulations to Tuang State School on a fabulous Hands and Heart Fair, which was on Saturday the 17th of August. Many hours go into events like this, from meetings, planning, preparing, setting up and packing down. So a warm thank you to the PNC Tuang Hands and Heart Committee. It is just truly grateful that they can run events like this. And I wanted to extend a heartfelt thanks to Meg Cridlin, the PNC president, Beck Hancock, the PNC manager, and all the PNC members. Along with the Lord Mayor's Community Fund, we were delighted to sponsor this event, which continues to bring vibrancy and unity to our community. Special thanks to Liz Fletcher's work. I particularly enjoy the incredible signing choir... I particularly enjoyed the incredible signing choir and the talent quests, including the staff and the students in the lip sync battle. It was awesome. Moving along, I would like to thank my team, Kylie, Melissa, Peter, Xanthie, Paige and Matt, who all helped out at our vibrant marquee on the day, particularly Kylie, who had the foresight of filling 28 sandbags that stopped many marquees flying away on a very windy day. Then, on Saturday, the 24th of August, the Walter Taylor Award hosted the opening of the Lexord South Dog Off Leash area. Thank you to all those who participated in dressing up their furry friends in the best costume for a chance to win the Wolf of Walter Taylor hamper. Dog goodies that were packed and purchased by local pet stock Indrapili, thanks to Bennett, local business operator, for all your help. It was a poursome morning with hundreds of locals in attendance, celebrating the opening of a fur-tastic dog park with doggy treat giveaways from Pop Tissery, free coffee, thanks to Shona at Hetty and Herms, and free sausages for both humans and dogs, thanks to the Tuong Rotary and King's College University students who volunteered on the barbecue. Face painting and balloon twisting and kids enjoyed all of the above. Thanks must go to Dr Ellen and Tim, also from Vets in the Village in St Lucia, for being our resident vet on hand for the morning. And finally, last Saturday was Witten Barracks Community Hub Open Day. Congratulations to Whitebox Social Enterprises, Luke and Gosha and all the team for a successful open day. Visitors enjoyed social enterprise markets, live music, food trucks, the good food, the good people, a double-decker bus, kids' activities and much more. For those who don't know, Witten Barracks is a one-of-a-kind World War II site with significant heritage. The Witten Barracks site is listed on the Queensland State Heritage Register and plays a vital role in the military intelligence between 1942 and 1960. The three cell block buildings on site are of significant historical interest and important surviving evidence of the only purpose-built World War II interrogation building for prisoners of war in Australia. Since acquiring the site in 2016, council has progressively remediated and upgraded the Witten Barracks and works were undertaken in stages over the past few years, with Brisbane's history now visible for all to see, and we're able to create spaces for the community to now use. Working with an organisation like Whitebox not only supports council's vision to return this historical site for community use, but also activates the site as a creative and social enterprise hub that fosters a positive ripple effect throughout the city, promoting social enterprise and community development. It is extremely rewarding to be able to support local events like the three I've listed, which create positive impact on the local economy and our community. I look forward to continuing to work with schools, businesses and social enterprises in our community to unlock the potential benefits for our city. Thank you.
Further general business, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on three items. One, urban greening at Riverside Drive. Two, the Asia-Pacific Young Audience Award at Griffiths Film School. And lastly, I will speak on the Trina Massey, councillor for the Gabba Ward Spring Newsletter. I'll be all right. Thanks for the interjection. Firstly, I want to thank over 60 residents from West End who came to our workshop last week on urban greening. It was an incredible workshop where we talked about the importance of the heat island effect and how we can counteract that with greening our streets. Of course, historically, the Karoolpa Peninsula was the heart of a dense rainforest before the colonisation of Brisbane. There are pockets of reforestation that is currently happening, not only on Riverside Drive, but across the Gabba Ward, particularly in Dr Mann and Griffiths Park, and it was so great to see a completely, completely packed, a completely packed venue. It was called The Nest, which is a new art studio venue in West End. We had multiple people from the apartments down there talking about how important Riverside Drive is, how the heat is something that is such a challenge, and how they believe that urban greening can not only counter the effects of the urban heat island effect, but with the right work, we can also reduce and mitigate flooding. Secondly, I was pleased to have gone to the Asia-Pacific Young Audience Award at Griffiths Film School. I thank all the students that were there. This award is really important because it teaches young people of critical thinking. It makes them look at foreign language film, diverse foreign language film, and highlights different points of view. And it was incredible to see, again, not only a room of people in Griffiths Film School, but we actually had students from Ipswich and various other councils from the South East. I was so pleased to speak to them, to talk about how an arts career can be very empowering, particularly in not only willing to be testing of new ideas, but also to be able to apply that critical lens when reviewing multiple different documents that might have bias. It was really great to hang out with them and they, I know, were really stoked to be in that room, because of course, that day, it was 34 degrees, and that was the first day of spring, so they were really thankful to be in that cinema. Lastly, I'm just going to speak on to my newsletter. As I've said before, earlier today, we went through the proper processes that were shared with us, and I welcome any and every investigation that comes upon this. Not only that, I welcome, as the deputy mayor, through you, deputy chair mentioned earlier, they are reviewing the CEO statement. None of these have arrived today. The CEO recommendation has not arrived. Any of the Office of the Independent Assessor reports have not arrived. I am actually, I stand here and I say, I went through the due process, and because I went through that due process, what actually happened today with an emergency process was to bypass that due process. It was a bypass for that. And I think that, of course, creates challenges. I don't think the challenges are actually, let me, let me be clear, this is a new process that's been saying that's now council process, right? And I think with the words of the deputy mayor, through you, deputy chair, and also with the words through you, deputy chair, of Fiona Cunningham, councillor Cunningham, sorry, what they said is a completely different precedent for the fact that we do all, from my understanding, send in our newsletters for approval, and also the fact that council does not, like, literally says, this bit, that bit, or we won't pay for it. Something important to note again is that these newsletters were already paid by Brisbane City Council. They did not withhold any payment. And so, I refuse to be engaged in a mock trial through chambers, and instead, I welcome any investigation or the recommendation of the CEO. And I actually am going to seek legal advice now, because I think what the council has done in here is wrong.
Any further general business, councillor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I rise to speak briefly on two issues, if I have time. First, the Walter Taylor Bridge closure, and secondly, newsletters generally. Firstly, with regarding the Walter Taylor Bridge closure. It's been almost a month since I wrote to the CEO and City Projects, pretty much the day I received the briefing note about the closure of the Walter Taylor Bridge outlining dozens of concerns, both on the 9th of August, in a follow-up email on the 12th of August, and in a follow-up email on the 22nd of August, asking for a reply to the issues that I've raised. It's now September, the 3rd of September, and it's just over a week until the bridge is closed. Brisbane City Council has not responded to the very genuine issues that I have raised, and I'm going to read the email I have received half an hour ago. This is what I get in my office every single day, and this is why Brisbane City Council should be ashamed of itself for the way that it has handled the Walter Taylor Bridge issue. "Hi Nicole, just a question about the bus 106 during the period of the bridge closure. I can't seem to locate any info about this bus as to where it is starting on this side of the bridge. I have seen buses starting at Sherwood Station, but what happens to people in Chelma and Graceville who use the bus?" She's asking for advice. Now, I don't know. Presumably, the bus service, the 106, is going to loop through Chelma and Graceville and drop her back at Sherwood Station, where she has to get on a train using stairs and then go to Indrapili. But wait, no! Apparently, the deputy mayor said something about this on radio this morning that no one's bothered to share with me or the local community. This council's failure to address this issue about public transport access, which is an issue that I raised on the 9th of August, almost a month ago, together with road safety issues, together with the impact of the closure and the detours, is appalling. It is a disgrace that this council has not had the courtesy to respond to me or to the residents in my ward who have legitimate questions about how the closure is going to impact upon them. Worse than that, as one of my constituents was on radio today saying, he just received The Living in Brisbane in his mailbox, and he said, there was nothing in it about the closure of the Walter Taylor Bridge. The variable message signs are all talking about the single lane closure on the Walter Taylor Bridge, they're not talking about the full closure of the Walter Taylor Bridge. This council's handling of this has just been absolutely appalling, and I personally think it is unprofessional and disgusting that the CEO of council and City Projects have not got back to me with the very genuine issues that I have raised about the impact of this closure on the residents of Tennyson Ward, Maruka Ward, Forest Lake Ward, Callumvale Ward, Sarah Hutton's Ward, a jamboree, those residents are in for the shock of their life with what's about to happen, and what's their local councillor doing to address the issue? Nothing, nothing. Managing traffic safely through Oxley and 17 Mile Rocks Road is such a critical issue, and councillor Hutton's done absolutely nothing on this. And I, I, I just, I'm appalled at how council has handled this issue. Secondly, on, and I just say, do us the courtesy of a reply. Now, I think this might be a good one for another motion to council, and I'm sure the LMP will be right behind it, councillor Adams will be leading the charge on this one. During the election campaign, during caretaker mode, a Living in Brisbane newsletter was published with the Lord Mayor's giant photo on it. That was after all councillors had been told that we could not include any photos in our newsletters. Yet, the council allowed the Lord Mayor to publish a photo in a council publication in contravention of the caretaker provisions during the election. Now, I understand they cost about $120,000 per, I understand they cost about $120,000 per addition, so I think I'll be bringing a motion to get the Lord Mayor to personally repay that, and I know that every single LMP councillor will support that, because there's a clear breach of council protocol there, and I'm not sure there's been one with councillor Massey, so I know you'll be right behind that decision.
Any further general business, councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak about two things in this very quick five minutes of general business that we have. The first thing is in relation to policy in council, and in my time in council, I've never seen things more haywire than the way things are now, and I see that right across the whole organisation. I know many staff watch this because of the comedy act that this, this chamber is. It's appalling. We are really delivering bad results for our staff, and we're putting them in very difficult positions, where we're almost politicising our staff. And our staff weren't employed to be, to be political puppets of any, any group. They were here to provide all councillors with good information. So, in relation to my understanding, we had to submit documents, we have to submit flyers for it to be approved, approved by council staff, so that it was paid. That's my understanding. And in fact, I've had call flutes that I haven't been allowed to print or pay for printing because it says councillor Shrinna on it. So, I know that there has been, at least for this side of the chamber, an approval process that we've had to go through. Now, I want to talk about another theme, something positive that we're doing in Maruka Ward, and it's called rewilding. We're doing a whole lot of, I've been able to pull together a group who are interested in rewilding the ward, and that is looking at re-establishing flora and fauna and working between the current structures that are out there, current council structures, current community structures, current educational structures, and filling the gaps with how can we rewild the ward. And one of our first little exciting projects has been at the Taragundi Reservoir, where there are three koalas that we know of, there are a number of echidnas. We've been able to work with this group. We've been able to bring together Tuie Forest Wildlife, we've been able to bring together Norman Creek catchment, we've been able to bring together council and QUU to actually look at how we work well together on this site and how we can improve the flora and fauna on this site. And through this way of working, we've been able to get some good partnerships going and also get some money out of QUU, so that we're actually improving this council land. So, I think this is a really exciting way of going. I think it's a really good way of energising the community and bringing younger people and older people and all these different groups together. One of the groups I am working with is Griffiths University. So, Griffiths University in the Eco Hub also last week did a presentation, I know it sounds crazy, but they just did a presentation on echidnas, and it was amazing to hear all this amazing researches going on in Brisbane, in our universities, in our cities, about echidnas. And I was surprised to see so many people there. I work with Dr Wade Habwin, who's up at the university, who does wonderful work with a number of PhD students, and it was really good to, to see the enthusiasm of local catchment groups, local residents around learning about our native flora and fauna and also wanting to be involved in ways of improving habitat in our area. So, I look forward to updating the chamber more about this rewilding group. I think it's the way of the future. I think it's what we can use some of our suburban initiative fund, and certainly, I'm using some of the suburban initiative fund, to do projects that, that really partner with existing groups, but bring the community in, bring young people in, and educate, but also talk about the environment in a really positive way and get really positive outcomes for our city. Thank you.
Just a point of order, Chair. Just seeking some clarification or ruling from you. There's been several points of order raised tonight, mostly by councillor Adams, the deputy mayor, around something she's calling impugning motive. There's no point of order under the Meetings Local Law about that. In fact, it's only unsuitable meeting conduct, of which those points of order have not been made under or dealt with under, and the Act also doesn't specify anything about impugning motive. So, you don't have to answer this right now, but just putting that on notice if we can get some advice around what the proper use of points of order actually are, particularly under the new Meetings Local Law and referring to what is included in the Local Government Act 2009.
I'll see in reply after the break. Yep. Further general business? If there's no further general business, councillors, I'll draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8A on the agenda. Councillor Strong, would you please move the motion? Sorry, your microphone's not on.
There we go. I've got a bigger voice anyways. Hands on. Okay, the council amends the 2024/25 council budget to include funding for the upgrade of the intersection of Pine, Archerfield and Azalea Street Richlands with traffic lights during the current financial year.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Strong, seconded by councillor Cassidy. The council amends the- The council amends the 2024/25 council budget to include funding to upgrade the intersection of Pine Road, Archerfield Road and Azalea Road, Street Richlands, with traffic signals during this current financial year. Is there any debate? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I move this notified motion because it is a local issue and we are told by the Lord Mayor that notified motions should be local issues. So I, yeah, I'll take that interjection that he's not here. Hasn't been here for a while, but yeah. But I would have thought that maybe he would have stuck around for this one because he has a lot of skin in the game on this particular motion. Now, this intersection has been a black spot for many years, well over 10 years. And I've raised this issue before, right? But I thought in the context of what transpired with a community newsletter and also a petition that was being undertaken by the state member for Anala, Margie Nightingale, that I would move this motion because we need some clarity as to far as what actually is going to happen in this intersection. Now, this intersection, as I said before, has been a black spot for more than 10 years. In 2017, Main Roads, this was the fifth worst in Brisbane. And that was 15 years ago. Well, what's happened since then? Well, in the last five years, there's been a crash, the crash daughter for that, this intersection is now 38 accidents with 10 serious injuries. And that's the reported ones. This intersection has many, many other crashes, but they're not reported for all sorts of reasons. Some people don't want to have the insurance company involved, they don't want to have the police involved, they just want to take care of it themselves. So now, what have we done? Well, over the last, well, since 2016-17, there was budget for design, scoping and design, which was $348,000. What happened after that? Nothing. In 2019-18, another, a lot of money of $146,000 for either additional design, I assume, right, from the original design. But and what happened after that? Nothing. In 2023-24, there was another $277,000 for design. What happened? Nothing. Then come around the election. In 2024-25, in March 2024, the election came around and it was a hot button topic in my ward, not just with me, but also with the by-election, right? And of course, the Lord Mayor knew he had an issue that he was going to have to deal with because when it comes to Anala and Durrack and Richland's residents, this is a dangerous intersection and they have wanted it fixed for years. Now, if you combine all that money, we have now spent $1.7 million on design. And the reason I brought the motion is because I want to hear from the other side that they're actually going to do something this financial year, other than more design money. They're actually going to fix it. And that's what the petition that has been undertaken by the state member, Margie Nightingale, well more than 1,000 people have signed the petition and they're demanding that we fix it now, not push it down the road like we have done three other times before. Now, anyone listening to this, whether it's here or across the chamber, if you had an intersection like this and you had spent all this money on design after all these years, you would be demanding it as well in your caucus, right? But you can't do it here in the chamber, I understand that, but it's a party room thing. So we're just calling upon the Lord Mayor to actually commit to doing this and not spending another $16,000 on a newsletter and the front page is about the intersection, right? Saying that they're going to do something now. Well, I want to know what you're doing now and not just more design. Thank you, Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner break for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's moved by councillor Dixon, seconded by councillor Gibney, that the chamber adjourn for an hour for dinner break. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those who can say no?
No.
Well, enjoy the dinner. Councillors, due to the absence from the party moving the motion, there is no quorum as per meeting local law, section 32. The meeting will adjourn until the next ordinary meeting. I declare the meeting adjourned.
Councillors, we now resume the meeting of the 3rd of September 2024 at item 8A on the agenda, which is the notice of motion. I will just read out the motion that was moved by councillor Strong and seconded by councillor Cassidy. "Council amends the 2024/25 council budget to include funding to upgrade the intersection of Pine Road, Archerfield Road and Azalea Street Richlands with traffic signals during the current financial year." Is there any further debate? Councillor Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish to move a procedural motion that the debate on this motion be adjourned until the beginning of the notified motion section of the next ordinary meeting of council as item A.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon that debate on the motion be adjourned to the next meeting. And seconded by councillor Gibney. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against, no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
A division has been called by councillor Johnston called and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor's ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8B on the agenda. Councillor Collier, would you please move the motion?
Chair, I move that council amends the 2024/25 council budget to commit funding to an upgrade of the playground in Belimba Memorial Park during this current financial year.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that council amends the 2024/25 council budget to commit funding to an upgrade of the playground in Belimba Memorial Park during this current financial year. Is there any debate? Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. And it was only two weeks ago that I presented a petition in this place with nearly 300 signatures calling on council to deliver an upgrade to beautiful Belimba Memorial Park.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Madam Chair, I wish to move a procedural motion that the debate on this motion be adjourned until the beginning of the notified motion section of the next ordinary meeting of councillors, item B.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the motion be moved to the next meeting. And I ask, all those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against, no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Councillor's ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 19 in favour and 8 against.
The motion is carried so that we now have both of those notified motions in notified motions in the next meeting. As we have to now close this meeting...
Point of order.
Where's one moment, I'm speaking, councillor. As we are now going to the next meeting, we do have to change over the IT. So we will need to have a break for 10 minutes and I will ask councillors to please leave the chamber for those 10 minutes. So I now close the meeting. Thank you.
So I can't move a point of order? What, you've closed the meeting?
The meeting is, councillor, that's because the meeting is finished. Thank you, councillors.